We'll call this meeting to order. First order up is into closed session, be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Section 2.2-3711, one, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body; number one, community college board; number two, community service board. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Out of closed meeting.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Demonts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Chair Blavens.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next certification of closed meetings. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has conveyed, convened a closed meeting on the date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you will please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Demonts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Blavens.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Right. Mr. Meadows, if I could ask you to lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Yes, if we could rise for a moment of silence, then I'll lead everyone in the pledge Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. We have several public hearings tonight. The first public hearing we have will be a special use permit Indigo Road Investments.
Let me get the slideshow to start here. So this is a request for an amendment to an SUP that was approved previously. The property is located off of Walton Road. It is outlined in yellow here. It's in the eastern side of the county. This road here is Spalding Road, so it's south of Spalding Road. The parcel actually consists of nine parcels that are together. Three of those are split zoned. One has a manufacturing zoning district on it, and it is currently being used as a recycling center. Previously, it was used as an automobile graveyard or junkyard, but it has been cleaned since that time, and that SUP is void. The road that serves the recycling center will also be used to serve the existing inert field site that was approved in 2021, and will be used to serve the new addition of three acres. That will bring the total inert field site to seven acres, if approved. This is the zoning map. You can see the parcel for the inert field site is zoned agriculture A1. Here is the manufacturing M1 zoning district, and there is rural residential zoning along Spalding Road. This is the revised concept plan. This shows the entire property, including the recycling center located in the M1 zoning district here. And then in the upper area, you'll see the hatched purple. That was the previously approved special use permit for the inert field area that was back in May of 2021. The darker shaded area here is the area that is proposed for expansion, and that totals about three acres. These are the access roads, and they have two going in, one going into the new three-acre portion, and then one that serves the larger four-acre portion that was already approved. The entrance road is off of Walton Road. They do not have any entrance off of Spalding Road, and it is proposed in the conditions that they not have an entrance off Spalding Road. That provides less disruption to the residences that are living in that rural residential zoning district. They estimate zero to forty trips per day. It's very much based on the construction industry and how they have things turning over, but they will be bringing the materials in. It is inert field, so it is things like brick, block, concrete, dirt. There's no material such as a landfill would see. This is strictly inert field. It's going to be approximately fifty-four hundred, fifty-four hundred trips if the addition of the three acres is proposed. They did not give us an exact time limit on that. It will likely increase it, I think before they said something like three to five years. Now it might be more like five to seven, five to ten years, depending on how debris is brought in. It should not increase the amount of traffic that they'll see daily. It's just the length of time that you'll see the traffic. VDOT did issue the construction entrance permit, and they have completed their entrance, so it is fully implemented. They are using the existing. This is the Walton Road entrance. You can see this if you look toward, on the picture on the left. That is going towards Route 11, and then the picture on the right is looking up towards So this site does not lie within a FEMA-designated flood zone area. Previously, we approved about 55,000 cubic yards of field. This increased volume would go up to 75,000 cubic yards. The site plan revision would include limits of disturbance that would have to be changed, so they would have to do a site plan revision if this were to be approved to expand those limits. In addition, they have to do an annual environmental audit, and the site has been compliant in previous inspections since they have been operating. This is the view of the current site. This here shows you their erosion and sediment control measures. There's a dam down here that allows the water to go through. And then this is the road that you take to get down into the site so they can pull the material down as they dump it from above. And then this picture on the right is standing almost down in the field site, looking back towards where they dumped from, and you can see how they've pulled it down the hill. So there, the additional proposed landfill is actually located further from where the originally approved site was from residences. So it does sit back, back farther from the residences. We have not received any complaints regarding the operations that have been ongoing. The main access road has been paved, so we haven't had any complaints related to dust. And we do have bonds in place for the remaining access road that still needs to be paved. They're kind of building it as they go. So this is the proposed site, and this is a picture looking at the proposed site, and then I sort of starred the concept plan so you could see where that picture was taken from and what it's showing. So this, there is a little bit of an access road here, and then we got a photo here. And then this is looking on the far end of the site, looking down. This is all the field site through here. It is located in a resource stewardship area of the comprehensive plan. That area is identified to have high resource value based on soil types, and it is also designated as some of our environmentally sensitive areas due to topography or unique landscapes. So rubble landfill was a definition that we added to the district after the comprehensive plan was designated. So while our comprehensive plan does not speak to rubble landfills, it is allowed only in agricultural A1 zoning districts. So assumption can be made that it's only permitted in those districts, therefore it would be in compliance with the resource stewardship. Staff does recognize the need for clean sites in the county. We do have a couple smaller sites, and then this larger site. It does offer the contractors options for disposal of that inert debris. However, it is important to mitigate the impacts. Compliance with the 1048-4 additional regulations do give us some guidance, and I've only outlined a few of those. Most of them are pretty basic, like lot size and things like that. So the ones that are most concerning is that it should be in accord with the regulations of other, the applicable agencies. DEQ has issued the necessary permits, and they will need additional permits for the additional three acres. The site is in compliance with those. Screening of the sites shall be sufficient. They have shown their buffer area on the plan, and they have done the plannings that were required from the previous SUP. That buffer will need to remain in place, and those areas cannot be disturbed. An annual environmental audit will be performed. The access road has been constructed, and it will be on all-weather materials so it doesn't generate the dust. The applicant has complied with the required hours of operation to this point and to the buffer requirement. We have not received any complaints. The hours approved by the previous SUP were 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. So staff recommended approval, and Planning Commission supported that recommendation at their last meeting. Conditions that they recommended for consideration were the conceptual layout, the use for the site, for the rubble landfill cannot extend beyond the boundaries of the area shown, and that has the dated plan. All boundaries of the approved field area shall be adequately marked on the property, including the property line between the proposed field area and the property that's under the same ownership located in the RR zoning district. That condition is a carryover. Other than direct access by vehicles bringing field to the site, the northern and northwestern perimeter boundary of the field area shall maintain a 75-foot buffer. This is a small change. We had said all boundaries of the inert field site, but then when we got to doing a site plan, that didn't make any sense because they were actually buffering themselves from themselves because the inert field site goes so deep into their property. The access road shall be maintained in passable condition at all times and shall be constructed with an all-weather surface material. No access to their existing parcel on Spalding Road is permitted, and all permits from other agencies must be provided, and then the hours shall be limited to seven to six. The Planning Commission passed the motion on a seven to O vote. There were two members absent. Adjoining property owners were notified in accordance with the code and the Code of Virginia. We have received an inquiry since this, and I did try to contact a member of the public today, but was unsuccessful in getting up with her. There was a public hearing signed placed on the property, and we did have two individuals that spoke to the Planning Commission. And with that, I'll take any questions for staff.
Okay. We'll go around the room, and I'll start off with Supervisor Demonts.
Thank you. Thank you, Bree.
Thank you.
Just one question about the bond. You said there's a bond in place for the road.
Correct.
What happens if the requirements to release the bond are not met? Does the bond just stay open in perpetuity?
We hold it until such a time that maybe they're using it, but they didn't build it to where it's supposed to be. We can then go pull that bond and construct the road according to the agreement. But yes, we hold it until it is in place and the project's completed.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
Supervisor Bone.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Supervisor King.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Fidjikowski.
No questions.
Vice Chair Biggs.
I have no questions.
Bree, the two folks that spoke at the planning, what were their concerns?
The one mainly had questions about another operation that occurred upon Spalding Road, and I think we clarified that. And then the other gentleman that spoke said he didn't have any opposition to what was, what was taking place currently. He had some basic questions. I think it was just about the new access road.
All right. Very good. Any follow-up? Thank you, Bree. We appreciate it. Now I have a sign-up sheet for the, for those that want to speak on this public hearing. As I call your name, you can come up to the lectern. You'll have four minutes to speak. When the yellow light, that is a warning of one minute left, and then the red, that means your time is up. And if you will state your name and address as you come forward.
Hello, my name is Pam Simpkins. I did want to see if I could have more than four minutes before I get started.
Our policy is four minutes.
When I asked earlier with the Planning Department, they said, they told me they did not think there would be a limit on the time that I had to speak.
Four minutes is our policy. Four minutes is our policy.
I need her two of my minutes because what I have to say is very short.
Unfortunately, the policy is four minutes as a representative or individual.
Okay, I'll get through what I can. My name is Pam Simpkins. Thank you for letting me speak today. I live at 1081 Walton Road. My husband and I bought our home and 122 acres in 1997, so that was 25 years ago. We first moved to the town in 1989, and we have been residents for 33 years. I've been in the area for more than 40 years, having worked at the county for nine years. Some of you were here when I worked here then. Tonight, I am speaking in opposition to the proposed amendment, and I only found out about this through the legal advertisement in Section 15.2-2204 of the Code of Virginia. Thankfully, the advertisement was in the paper, and I was able to find out about this. I have been in contact with a lot of officials since reading that ad. I've received a lot of information, more than 400 documents to try to catch up, get up to speed on this. I've not been provided all the information that I requested. I did get a call from Bree today, but I called her back and I didn't hear from her. This area is located within the resource stewardship area of the county's comprehensive plan. As a reminder, by your own definition, resource stewardship areas are identified as a rural area of the county and have high resource value based on soil types. Other areas that are environmentally sensitive due to the topography or unique land characteristics, that was shown to you just a minute ago in the presentation that was previously made. This site does not fit within the requirements of a resource stewardship. It goes against everything. It does not have agriculture, it does not support forestry, it does not support outdoor recreation or natural resource-based. It's not non-residential, and even though it is non-residential, it doesn't support any of these, and it should be discouraged. These were the same comments Bree Hopkins made in that March 21st meeting, 2021, when another SUP was presented for Caverns Out of Winery. That same information was shared, where it was discouraged to approve that SUP. You've all heard about the dangerous traffic increases on Walton Road. It's an underserved and unmanaged road. It's very dangerous, five-mile curvy road. There's been many wrecks on it in my 25 years that I've lived there. Many vehicle crashes where drivers failed to maneuver curves or get off the edge of the road and lose control, and many cars even just end up in fields mingled with fence line because they missed curves. The spot where one of the most dangerous spots on Walton Road is 100 yards off of Rathford Road, which is exactly where these big trucks have to travel. There's dangerous curves for cars, school buses, and dump trucks. We've all seen wrecks at specific spots, right there at the top of the hill. Even though they improve the entrance to the site, the section of the road that these trucks travel on is very dangerous, and it impacts all of us that use that road. So I bring to you two concerns tonight. One is, as a property owner, I feel like this is definitely against your comprehensive plan and the resource stewardship. plan and the resource stewardship. I myself, we own 122 acres. We have restrictions on our own land where we can't subdivide it more than three times, and no one, other than family members, can build on our own land. We've honored that for 25 years that we've lived there. All I do is ask for you to honor those same restrictions on your own comprehensive plan and your own resource stewardship definition. So I'm asking that you do not approve this amendment. It's only been less than a year since they asked for three acres or four acres, and now they're asking for four more acres to increase it, and it's only, it's going to be an unending, ongoing problem for the landowners of Walton Road. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker we have is Alice Williams. Ms. Williams, you'll have four minutes as well.
Thank you. I won't need that much time. I'm not nearly as well-prepared as Ms. Simpkins is. I applaud her for the research that she's done. It saves me a lot of breath and time. I don't live on Walton Road, however, I live on Route 11, about maybe a mile and a half from the entrance to Walton Road. So I travel it quite frequently. My husband uses it every day to go to work in Blacksburg, and that road is so small. The trucks are so big. It's not maintained well at all. The ditch lines on the side constantly have watershed over the road there, especially at that terrible S-curve section right there where there's some home properties. That's where all the accidents happen. You know, not only damage to personal property, but lives have been lost in that area due to the ice and the condition of the roads. Therefore, these trucks are going to mangle the road even more. There's not enough space. I have a young daughter that has recently started driving, finally got to go out on her own. Well, what happens? She comes home all excited, upset. It's like, what happened? A big truck ran her off the road on there. She has a little tiny car, so maybe they didn't see her. That's no excuse for staying, not staying into your lane. We pay taxes on both sides, but you need to use only one side at a time. So luckily, there was no damage to her personal property or her person, but that in itself is enough to tell me those trucks don't belong there. They don't belong in that area. It's become way more saturated with people traveling. There are farmers out there with moving their hay, moving their, their produce, moving their cows. That in itself presents enough challenge as it is for them to do what they need to do. I don't know when the last time someone assessed that road to see that it needs to be updated, but it's not maintained. A bigger issue that I have with that also is, it's just flat-out dangerous and not a good idea. You give an inch, you take a mile. So they've already had their inch, and now the miles are coming in behind it. I have a property on Route 11 that has a very large parking lot in front of it. Oftentimes, those trucks pull in there. They have totally destroyed my parking lot with potholes just because of the weight of them, in particular, a big open space here where people think, oh, okay, no one lives here. Well, I live right in behind it. You all may be familiar, it used to be the old Plum Creek Diner. Well, my home isn't behind that, and I own that property in front. The road, it wasn't too bad at first. I've gotten estimates on having it resurfaced because of the damage that has been done. It's going to cost $20,000 to $25,000 for me to redo that front section where those trucks have sput out. The police run right down our lot, too. So it's not just them, it's other people using our property, and they, they see a driver coming down through there, and they race and peel out there after, after them. So that's really odd, I gotta say. Please reconsider what you've done. I am totally against this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. That's all. We have signed up, but if anybody'd like to come forward to speak on this topic of the public hearing, you may come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Appreciate your time this evening. My name is John Neal. I'm an engineer with Gay Neal here representing the project. And Bobby Phillips, the owner, is here as well, if you have any questions for him. I do have a brief presentation that I'll go through. Bree really covered just about everything that I'm going to cover, so I want to tell you a couple of things that you've already heard. This is the initial SUP application that we went through last year, where we had the three to four area, three to four acres of area for fill that was accessed through the existing recycling facility. And then this is the other plan that we're showing here with this new area in kind of the pink that doesn't have the hatching over it, and we are proposing to buffer around that entire area. And that in and of itself is actually buffering Mr. Phillips' property as well, his 124 acres of property. And you can see in the yellow here, this is the existing recycling facility that is zoned manufacturing, and we have construction going on there right there, right now, preparing for the scale house that will be allowing for the additional recycling materials to be coming into the site. And then here's zoomed in a little bit, showing this area. One of the reasons, and you may be asking yourselves when we were asked by the Planning Commission, why are you coming back so quickly for another addition to this fill area? And the key reason for that is, when we went through the process the first time, we were looking at this area off to the left of the access drive, and it has an intermittent, or actually an ephemeral channel on it, and we went through the process with the DEQ and the Corps of Engineers to get that permitted. When we were out there checking it, as, as this process started, we had the environmental consultant and the Corps of Engineers look at this area off to the right that we're wanting to add. There is no jurisdictional area there for ephemeral channel, intermittent stream, anything like that. So the DEQ was able to approve this area without any additional mitigation or anything like that. So there is no ephemeral channel, jurisdictional waters, intermittent stream in that area. So we wanted to go ahead and add that to the fill site. And we're going to modify our stormwater management facility as well because both of these areas come down to the same point, the same drainage point. And so I know there was some concern as well at the Planning Commission about the possibility of filling back on the rest of the property. None of the rest of the property drains to this point where we're building the stormwater management facility. So that, that would present other problems, and I do believe that there is jurisdictional stream here which actually goes out and drains towards Lithia Springs Road. So it's a different watershed altogether. And there's where you can see the manufacturing zoning. And then some of the key information that I want to make sure that we're clear about is that our existing access is still going to maintain and continue through the New River Recycling property that has the recycling facility operating on it today. And this is not a rezoning, but a special use permit, and the DEQ and the Corps of Engineers have approved this site. And this is separate from the proposed inert, the other proposed, the New River Recycling site is separate from this SUP, but we will be using the same entrance, and that was approved by VDOT, and we do have a tremendously accessible entrance to the site. And looking at the adjacent properties, this yellow circle here is where this new amendment to the SUP that was previously approved, where we're proposing that. And this was some of the previous conditions. I think I showed you this the last time, but I think it bears seeing again. When Mr. Phillips acquired the property, it had been used as a automobile graveyard for a very long number of years, and he cleaned up all of this stuff that was on the property. And if you go up there now, and I think some of you have been up there, you've seen the type of operation he runs right now. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else for the public hearing like to speak? Please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I will close this public hearing. Next public hearing that we have is issuance of the VPSA general obligation school bonds.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is a requirement for issuing bonds through the Virginia Public Service Authority. This is a public hearing this evening for folks who may want to comment. I will say for the board, we are going to have a work session on this topic as well this evening, but this is for comment regarding the authorization of issuance of general obligation school bonds and an estimated maximum principal amount of $100 million, the proceeds of which would be used to finance renovations and other improvements to Christiansburg High School, and also additional capital projects for school purposes.
I don't have anyone signed up, but if anyone is interested and would like to speak at this public hearing, please come forward with your name, address, and you'll have four minutes. Seeing no one approach, I will close this public hearing. Public address. Do not have anyone signed up for public address this, this evening, but if you would like to come forward and state your name and address, you'll have four minutes to speak, whether speaking as an individual or representative. All comments must be directed to the chair and other supervisors from the lectern. At the front of the room, please begin by stating your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statements and comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in any personal attacks, use of profanity, or abuse of language, and debate between the audience and not addressed it, and not addressed it by the supervisors. And let me make sure we've got our time set. All right. Very good. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Ashner. I live at 2675 Glade Drive, Christiansburg, Virginia. I am here to request legislative changes to family court policies and the law enforcement response to criminal activity related to the family courts. We have talked about how strangers who felt that because they knew my son's mom and that she didn't want him, that they had a right to adopt him. And for the record, I've never failed a drug test. We've talked about how they can commit crime after crime to get custody of my child. You don't have to take my word for it, since I have video of two different law enforcement agencies confirming these crimes but refusing to act. We've talked about abduction, being to gain control of someone by violence, threat of violence, or deception. But if that deception is under oath to a judge, one felony cancels out the other felony, making abduction legal. Call the Sheriff's Department and ask them if they investigate that. When they say no, ask them to see the policy that says that. They can't show it to you. Why would the police protect childhood abductors? Well, for money, of course. Social Security Act Title IV, Section D, says that the federal government will match what the state collects in child support. That's why the Virginia Bar Association says in family court, you don't have a right to a fair trial, and why the Virginia DSS homepage shows the amount of money that they have collected in child support so far this year. Speaking of, I know you said there's nothing you can do, but you had the idea of Rodney Richmond about something else. How's that letter I suggested coming along? The one where you tell them that the judges and law enforcement keep protecting child abductors to make money, you don't want their money. Montgomery County makes money off child abductions in another way, too, like mental health. In 2015, they put me in a mental hospital for repeating laws and policies, and after I proved my story was true at the hospital, I filed a complaint, which to them means I need to go back to the hospital. You receive Medicaid money for this. It needs to be returned. You charged me money for this. I want it back. If law enforcement or mental health had done anything but treat me like trash, you couldn't have given me a $1,200 bill for trying to kill myself. I go to the next mental health appointment with the video camera because I'm going to be asking, why are they making money off lying about government policy? And I was successful because I caught me a criminal on camera, and her name was Melanie Atkins. I sent you the video and her report that says I was hospitalized for not saying I wouldn't hurt myself or anyone else three times. Seven times in the video, I deny it, and three times, she acknowledges I denied it. I filed multiple complaints, none of which we responded to. Now I guess I'm escalating to management. You have the video and the list of times it was brought up. Can you show me these three times? If not, show me where the policy says to falsify medical records. If you can't do that either, I want your employee, Melanie Atkins, and her supervisor who didn't handle the complaint terminated, and I want their pensions of punitive damages. Thank you. Y'all have a nice evening.
Anyone else for public address?
Good evening, Chair Blevins and members of the board. My name is Susan Cass. I am a resident at 2805 Mount Vernon Lane in Blacksburg, Virginia, and I am also the chair of our local school board. I understand there's been some concerns voiced by the board regarding our school board budget and the impact of our recent decision regarding our superintendent on the budget. There's been some misleading information that's been disseminated to the public, and I'd like to provide what information I can to help alleviate your concerns. Just like your board, excuse me, we are elected officials with a fiscal responsibility to our constituents. This is a responsibility we do not take lightly, and any decision we made was one that took into consideration the fiscal impact, as well as the effects on our staff, our students, and our community. We would not have made a decision that we didn't think our budget could manage, or one that we would, that would affect our staff and students negatively. I cannot share the details of the agreement with you because it is a personnel matter. We have one employee who reports directly to us, and that's the superintendent. But we ask that you trust the board, just as we trust you. And our unanimous decision on, on how to end Dr. Meyer's contract, every board member came to the same conclusion, and if you watch our board meetings, you know that doesn't happen very often. We are now positioned to immediately move forward in a positive direction with our interim superintendent, Dr. Annie Whitaker, and our assistant superintendent for Finance and Operations, Tommy Krantz. It's imperative that we are able to focus on supporting our students and the learning loss experienced during COVID. To do so, we need to make sure we continue to support our, support our staff financially. We look forward to working with the board supervisors to help us in providing a budget that allows us to recognize the contributions of our hard-working staff and ensure the continued success of our initiatives. Please remember that it is the children of our county who benefit from maintaining a strong staff. I look forward to our upcoming joint session on April 12th, and I hope you all have a good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Casey Jenkins. I'm the executive director of the Montgomery Museum of Art and History. I live at 1150 George Edward Villa, Christiansburg, Virginia. And I did not have the opportunity to come before you a few weeks ago when the rest of my board did to request the one-time capital contribution to the museum for our new building located right here in, in downtown Christiansburg, and I was 10,000 feet above an airplane, and I apologize about that. But I did want to take the opportunity tonight to express my gratitude and thanks to the board for allowing this, this one-time capital contribution. It really goes a long way for the growth of the museum and what we can do in our capacity going forward in our new location, and we are just so enthused by the partnership and collaboration with the board here and the support that you guys have every year given to us, and especially in a very big way this year. So we are very grateful for that, and I'd be remiss if I didn't come before you to express my gratitude and thanks for that as well, since I couldn't be here a few weeks ago. So just want to take a moment to say thank you and appreciate all that you guys are doing, and you guys, if you have any questions, you know where to find us. So thank you so much, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else come forward, we'll close the, oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Thank you for, let me, let me speak. My name is Bob Beard. I live at 1200 Flint Drive. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the Montgomery County school system. As a parent, as a citizen of the community, appears the school system is in great disarray. We have a superintendent who's just let go without cause at a cost to our community in time and money. On March 1st, Dr. Meyer said that the county may have a legal battle with the state because he and the school board feels that it's more important, equity's more important than, than learning, than math, science, reading, and, and critical thinking. The goal is to teach our kids what to think and not how to think. The math and science S.O.S. scores have dropped over 25% in just two years. I've been attending the school meetings for about six months now, and in that whole time, I've not heard them discuss once the issue of bringing our school, our children back to excellence. It's just so disappointing. We also hear about the teachers wanting a seat at the table. They want more money. They want to spend more time teaching and not as much time on administrative work. They want a guaranteed lunch break, more school supplies. All sounds reasonable, but the question is, why do teachers need an outside, third-party organization to address these issues or concerns? Were the teachers having issues? Were the teachers having issues? How is having a third-party paid organizer in the best interest of this community? Why has the school administrators failed to listen to the teachers? Now the school board is trying to add another layer of bureaucracy. And so where will the parents sit? We just overly voted for parents' rights in this last election. We shouldn't... We wouldn't be in this mess if the school administration had done their job. When the school administration failed to do their job, the school board failed the school administration to hold the school board accountable. I'm sorry. To hold the school administrative accountable. The school board has failed the teachers. It is timed in this madness. Stop the collective bargaining. It is time for the school board supervisors to hold the school board accountable. Board supervisors has the authority and duty to hold the school board accountable for their actions, incompetence, and failures. Please stop this collective bargaining. Let the parents vote on collective bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll close the public address. Next addendum.
No addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
No addendum. Into work session, do I have a motion to move into work session?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the room.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Ridzikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Bix.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Madam Chair and board members, tonight, our work session is going to be spending some time talking about future capital projects, both for the county and for the schools. One thing that I'm very pleased to share with you is we have been working diligently to create a more formal five-year capital improvement plan for the county. There's a number of reasons that we need to have that, not the least of which is so we can identify funding sources as we move forward with some of these major capital projects in the years ahead. And with that, Mark McGruder is going to make a presentation to us this evening about the process that we've gone through. At the end of that presentation, we're going to share with you a booklet that we have put together related to the fiscal year '23 through '27 capital improvement plan. That will have information on a number of projects that county staff has identified, and we'll talk a little bit about those after the presentation.
I think your mic is off.
When the light's off, it's on.
Light's off?
There you go.
Yeah, it's confusing. When the light's off, the mic is on.
Okay. Good. All right. So first thing I wanted to do is talk a little bit about the difference between the operating budget and the capital program. And so, as you guys know, each year we come forward with an annual operating budget, and that basically is our annual spending plan for day-to-day operations. And that's what you guys are most familiar with. You see it every single year. The capital plan, by contrast, is a multi-year spending plan for the construction of major capital infrastructure. And it's really a five-year plan for capital projects that are generally either debt-funded through debt proceeds or through direct cash contributions, which I like to call cash to capital. And what's important about the capital improvement plan is that the CIP is linked directly with the operating budgets. Capital projects come with significant operating costs, so the CIP has a direct impact on our annual operating budget. And then one thing I want to add, you know, I'm super excited to present the CIP this year, and I want to tell you why I like capital infrastructure and the CIP in general. You know, we put an operating budget in front of you guys, and you know, we focus on that from year to year to year. But 10 years from now, we'll all be hard-pressed to talk about what we did in the operating budget. But every day when I come to work and I see the courthouse, or I see the public safety building, or I see ball fields, I see that, and I see that for decades. And I know that I was part of that. And so that's why I think capital planning is such an important part. It shows where we're headed for the future. So what is a capital improvement plan? Really, it's a living document, and why I say that is it's updated annually, and it can change as priorities change, as funding mechanisms change. Then we update the document as we go along. In order to qualify, projects must have a useful life of five years or more and cost over a specific dollar amount. And for Montgomery County, that dollar amount is $50,000. So in order to qualify as a capital expense, it has to be at least $50,000. Most of the time, those expenditures are way more than $50,000. We're really talking about bricks and mortar. We're talking about multimillion-dollar projects. Capital projects differ from other capital outlay items in the operating budget. You'll notice in the operating budget, we have capital outlay items, and really, the difference has to do with the useful life and overall cost. Capital projects are bigger in scope. Capital outlay, on the other hand, are generally lower-cost items that have at least a one-year useful life, but are really more routine in nature. And as I said earlier, a former CIP is linked to the operating budget, and it serves as a forecast of future operating expenditures. And I've said this many times before, there is nothing that will squeeze your operating budget like a capital improvement plan, because you are not going to spend millions of dollars building an infrastructure and then not fund the operating costs that are associated with Now I want to talk a little bit about the CIP process that we go through. So the process begins really well before the operating budget process begins. We start in August to begin the process. Departments submit new and update their existing CIP projects, and that usually works through September. And then projects are reviewed by a technical review committee, and that includes the deputy county administrator and chief financial officer, the assistant county administrator, the budget director, the general services director, the IT director, the planning director, and a representative from the school system, which this year was the assistant superintendent. Capital project requests are analyzed using evaluation criteria. We have an evaluation form that's based on a total of 87 points. This was actually put together in excess of 18 years ago, and it's based on urgent need, public safety and health, and welfare needs, whether or not the project addresses county goals, whether the project meets legal requirements, what the economic impact is to the project, CIP affordability, and whether or not there's public support. And then all those projects are scored and ranked by the committee. After we get a scoring and ranking, the budget department prepares financing options. Recommendations are presented to the county administrator. County administration then presents the CIP to the board of supervisors to get a general consensus on the projects. The planning commission will review the projects for consistency with a comprehensive plan, and then ultimately, the board of supervisors approves the CIP. So that pretty much goes through the CIP process, and I will entertain any questions you have about the process. And then we're going to have a few more presentations tonight on... Davenport is here to do a presentation, and then we're going to give you sort of an update on some CIP funding ideas.
We'll go around... Anybody have questions? Go around the room for questions? No? Anybody? Right now? Okay, we're good.
And with Mark's leadoff on that, we will come back for a further discussion about the items in the CIP just a little later in the evening. But at this point, we're going to recognize Courtney Rogers with Davenport. Courtney's going to talk with us a little bit about potential debt issues for the county, one being for Montgomery County Public Schools, one being for the county itself. We want you to have a good feel for where we think things are with the two debt issues before we move back into a further discussion about the capital projects. So Courtney, glad you're here.
Great, thank you. Great to see everybody again. So as Craig said, what we're going to talk about tonight are the two areas, really schools and then general government. The schools, we're looking at up to $100 million. For general government, we're talking about up to $20 million. Essentially, what we're going to talk about is getting into the market here in the next 60 days or so. And I know one of the topics tonight is, and we won't get your approval a little bit later in the new business section, is to actually approve what the number is that we're going to go to market with. As many of you have been, as you watch the news, have seen interest rates have been going up. So one of the things that we were set out to do is try to get this done as quickly as we can. The good news is we're still under 4%, and while we're a little bit spoiled, because we saw some very low rates in the last several years, 4% still, if we can get in under 4%, still a really good interest rate to get 20-year debt done. So I will be celebrating 30 years working in Virginia this week, and so 4% is still a good number. I can remember when we were running numbers at 6%. So I proposed plan finance, and what I wanted to do is explain why we're talking about doing two separate bond issuances. As you might recall, the Virginia Public School Authority has a program that allows us to go and do a standalone program if it meets certain criteria. One of those is size, and we're well in excess of that. What it allows us to do is to use our own bond rating and issue geo-bonds versus issuing a lease revenue or appropriation debt, which will be one notch off our issuer rating, which is slightly lower-rated, which, of course, carries a slightly higher interest rate. That's what we're proposing to do for the general government projects, because there's not a program for general projects out there that the state has that would meet the same criteria. So our proposal is to move forward with two separate issuances. Yes, there's a little bit additional issuance costs, because the ratings, we're going to be issuing, getting two separate ratings, things like that. But net-net, we found it's still going to save the county at least over $400,000, if not more, net of those additional expenses by the time we do it in this method. So I'm happy to get into more details about that, but just want to kind of run through that very quickly. We did meet with the rating agencies virtually on Thursday. We're expecting to get those ratings back next week. We're not expecting any change. Our rating in the past has been a AA1, AA+. What they've said in the past was that we do have high debt levels, but we are within our ratios. And when they say high debt levels, they're comparing us to other issuers around the country. And so, but we are still within our debt ratios. We don't expect that to be a problem with our rating, but it will keep us from getting higher at this point. So we're not expecting any upgrades.
But I keep pressing the case.
We do. We do keep pressing the case, and we keep asking, and we keep talking about it internally. I will say that the good news is, coming out of the pandemic, most local governments have fared very well. Sales tax numbers have been up. Obviously, you've got cares and upper money that have been put to good use. So from that standpoint, we're not concerned on the financial side of it. In our situation, it's really just the debt aspect. To give you a sense of where we are, we ran our last set of numbers just under two weeks ago on March 16th. Because rates have been climbing, we added a cushion of 50 basis points. We have eaten into that cushion a little bit over the last couple of weeks, so we'll say that. But with that cushion, we're expecting a rate to be in around 330 at this point if we were to go to market. We should be slightly under that. Hopefully, we can... We're going to sell April 12th, so we're not that far away. So hopefully, we can get there before rates continue to go too much further. On the lease piece, about a 335 is what we're thinking at market plus 50. That one is usually a little bit wider, but one of the things that I want to point out is that we have backloaded the school project to make sure that we stay within our debt ratios. So you'll notice that we've got interest only for a couple of years, and we have structured principal. You can see that on this next slide in the kind of the tan, light greenish area there. That is interest only for '23, '24, and '25. And then the next four years, we're going to what we call structure the principal. So we don't have exact level debt service until we get out into 2030. So basically, with this estimate of the market rates, we think we're going to need additional funding of about 3.2 million. We understand that there are funds, the money that you've been setting aside for school projects, that's where that money will come from, and we have sufficient amounts to take care of that. So there won't be any additional revenues needed from your operating budget to take care of this particular issuance at that $100 million level. What does it look like? Again, graphically, you can see here that blue line is the dollars that are already in the budget for school debt service. And so you can see, we go through it in the first three years. That's where we need that additional dollars to get us back below that blue line. This is going to be, I think, something I want to point out now, because we're going to talk about this probably as we go through the evening. What you'll notice on that slide is that we don't see a drop-down from a cash flow standpoint until 2030. So we've basically structured this to be right at the debt service line out through 2029. So the next time there are dollars available for school projects from a debt service standpoint, it's going to be 2030, and then again, 2031 and 32, you can see a drop-down. From the county's standpoint, we don't need any additional dollars. The budget that you have for debt service and capital will cover a $20 million issue at this point. You can see that in the graphic. Not only does it cover it, there's actually excess that'll be basically building up to be able to use for some pay-go projects, and I'm sure Mark will be able to use in his CIP we'll be talking about. From a capacity standpoint, in terms of our debt ratios, there are two of them. Debt, outstanding debt as a percentage of assessed value. You can see in this graphic here, we're well below both our top-end target of 4% as well as our lower target of 3%. So that's not an issue. The one, of course, that we've been having to keep an eye on over the last several years has been the annual debt service as a percentage of budget expenditures. In this case, you can see we're below our 12%. You can see the VPSA debt in the green and the county debt in the tan. So we still have a little bit of capacity there, and then it comes down as debt service drops down, as well as your assessed, or the budget is expected to grow. So from timetable standpoint, again, April 12th is when we're expecting to go to market for the school bonds. We have to separate them for IRS purposes, so we'll do the second set of bonds on April 27th in terms of the bond sale. So I'm happy to answer.
All right. I guess we'll just go around. Supervisor Bone.
Thanks so much for coming. So the bar graph that you showed that we were well within the most recent, the one before that, actually. This is just for the county side of things? It's not included?
That's both. It is both, yes, ma'am. The dark green is existing debt, which consists of both county and schools. The light green is the VPSA debt, and the tan is the county debt.
And on Slide 9, can you tell us again where that extra money, the dollars in the red, where's that coming from?
It's actually going to come... It could come from several different places. It could come from fund balance. As you remember, that we ended well at the end of June of '21. We also expect that we will have revenues exceeding the estimate for the current year, so it could easily come out of those funds as well. It would not come out of school capital project. It wouldn't come out of the pennies that we set aside for school capital.
To the extent of a million. I mean, we have all of that.
We do. What we would do if you chose this is go ahead and transfer the money into the debt service fund. We would set it aside at that time so that we'd be reserved officially and formally by the board.
And pretty confident for the next three years that we'll have those surpluses?
The total is 3.2 for that amount of time, so we would set that aside right now, so that it would definitely be there for the future.
So if we had a catastrophe, obviously, we hope that we don't have a catastrophe, but we never expected the Blacksburg High School to collapse. If something like that were to happen in the next couple of years and we're already at our capacity, what's our backup plan?
In terms of bond, for anything, any other types of projects, assuming that's more than what you have in the bank and savings and things like that. But keep in mind, one of the things that happened, not that we want to go there again, but with Blacksburg, we actually did exceed our policies, and the rating agencies were okay with that because it was an emergency. Not that we really want to go there again, but that is, that is, so if, let's just say it's something you want to do and it's not an emergency, that's obviously a different situation.
And from the fiscal side, on the county side, that also resulted in a 12-cent tax increase to fund the new debt. So it was a pretty substantial tax increase, too.
I think I have one more question, so bear with me. The sales of the bonds, will they be slow because we're locking in a low rate and people can just wait a month or two to get a better bond?
I'm sorry.
When you sell the bonds.
Right.
People, I mean, they're going to be at such a low rate, and the rates are going up so fast that people might just wait and not buy the lower.
I see what you're saying. So the majority of who, of our buyers for something of this size, for sure, are going to be the bond funds rather than mom and pop, personal buyers. And they get a certain amount of money and they have to spend it on something. They can't buy their own charters, sit on cash. They can only sit up to like 10% of cash. So they have to buy something. There's not a lot of bonds in the market right now. So we're seeing, we sold bonds a couple of weeks ago for Albemarle County, and we saw 11 bidders, different firms bidding on the bond issue. And that's, would usually be maybe seven to nine, or maybe five to six. So we're seeing a lot of demand, believe it or not, even though rates are going up. So we're not concerned about finding the buyers. They're falling over themselves to actually buy bonds because there's not a lot of supply out there.
And we don't get any, we don't get to charge a premium, you know?
Well, there's.
If the supply and demand's in our favor, is that what you're?
Part of it is we're putting everybody in competition with each other.
Yep.
So to, so to me, that is a sort of a premium. We could go out and select a firm and negotiate interest rates and things like that. But to me, this is, gets the sharpest pencil. You put it out there for bid, all the firms are out there. This is a very, one of the things that happens in a market like this, too, is the higher quality is very, much in demand. And we're knocking, we're right there on knocking on the door. We're going to be very desirable, especially the size. That's the other thing, is seeing a sizable issue like this where they can go do their homework, they can look at, you know, the background of Montgomery County and buy large chunks of bonds rather than buying a million dollars. They can go out and buy, with $100 million, they can go out and buy very large five- and $10 million blocks.
Right. So page 17, maybe I'm looking at this incorrectly. So you see the 94.6 million at the bottom of that very first principle. That's not what we're borrowing.
So, so I smiled when you said the premium. So we will, and this may be different than your definition of premium, but in our market today, we still have buyers that want higher coupons. It protects them in a rising interest rate environment, so we tend to sell coupons of like 4% and 5%, whereas the interest rates may be 2% and 3%. And so what happens is, the way you do the math, is you, we end up selling the bonds to them at a premium. So they may pay 120 instead of par, and that extra $20 allows us to issue less debt, but still put in the bank $100 million. So the differential there is roughly $5 million of premium that's amortized over the life of the bonds from an accounting standpoint, things like that. We end up paying a little bit higher interest, but we don't issue as much bond. So it ends up, at the end of the day, still being a good transaction.
That's excellent, interest rates. So how much does this cost the county to do?
From a cost of issuance standpoint?
So I'm sure whatever, you've got to get paid, right?
Right.
All this kind of, all the, everybody's got to get paid, so how much does that cost?
So we have ourselves, you have bond council, you have the bond rating agencies, and then you have the underwriters. Whoever wins the bonds, while we don't dictate how much they make, they build it into their bid. It's still a cost, but it's built into their bid. So we've allocated, just for this number, for the size tonight, a half a million dollars for 100 million. It's basically what we've estimated. We think it'll come in less than that, but we always estimate high because one of the things that, when you adopt this resolution tonight, is we have to set a maximum number. We don't want to be close to it. We want to come in below it, but we have to set a max.
So is the half a million dollars for the 100 million, or is it for both?
For the 100 million. The 20 would be a lot lower than that because of, it's all about the size of it.
Approximately one-fifth.
I think, did we use, do you know what the number was we used on that one? I want to say, Alex, maybe it's 300, but I just can't remember.
The draft resolution says five.
On both?
Yes, on both, five on both.
It wouldn't be that high on the 20. I think he was just putting an estimate in there in both, just to pull a number in.
Because of the structure or whatever, yep.
Size. The rating agencies charge on size.
Interesting.
So they're going to charge you more for the bigger issue than they will the smaller one.
Gotcha. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Supervisor Shepherd.
I think I already know the answer to my question, but, and it may be very well irrelevant. Does the, I want to say this. Does the debt service on the county side, where we have more, have more buffer, does it have anything to do with the school side? Does it help them, or could it help later on, or?
Having that extra space?
Yeah.
It's up to you all, the way, in terms of whether you wanted to give them some of your dollars. That's obviously your choice as you're putting your budget together.
And one more question. If, let's say we drop down to 90 million instead of 100 million on the school side, what does that do to the 3.2 million?
It reduces it. We ran a, we ran a number at 85 just to see what that number was, and I think the number was like 1.7 million. So it does reduce it.
Reduces it, but at 85, we still have, need to come up with 1.7?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Okay. Supervisor Fidzikowski?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Supervisor King?
Just from my understanding, if we do 100 million dollars for the schools, that taps them out.
From a cash flow standpoint?
Right, right.
And it does at 85 million, too, just to be clear, because we've structured it to stay within that blue line on that graph.
So if we go 85 and something happens.
It's still.
We got nowhere else to go.
It, from a, well, it just means you have to find additional revenues.
Don't take tax increase.
No, that's, that was, he said that very nicely, but yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't, as I used to say, it doesn't max out the credit card, but it does require additional revenues to cover that debt.
So when we issue bonds, we look at two things. We look at our capacity, which is all those ratios that Courtney has reviewed. And then we also look at what we call affordability, which is whether or not we have money in the budget to, already in the budget to pay for the debt service. If we only issued 85 million, we would have more capacity. So our, like, the Courtney has put up.
This chart.
This chart that shows you that we would have more, we would be able to borrow more. We would have to find money to pay for it, as you said, through a tax increase or some other way. But we would have the ability to borrow the funds without exceeding our ratios.
And if nothing happened and everything was going smooth, we wouldn't be able to borrow again till 2030?
Right. We could probably borrow in '29, 430, but essentially, the cash flow is not available until 2030.
Yeah, without additional revenues to cover any additional debt.
So that means no new renovations, no nothing.
They have the two and a half cents that the board appropriates for their capital projects every year that they could use for those types of things, but there would not be funding for major projects.
So 80 million dollars, we'd be in good shape?
Same, the same situation, because what we've done is, and maybe it's easier to show on the previous page. I guess it's that page. With the tan area, we're doing interest only, so there's no principal in there. With the blue, we're doing principal only. Even though, even if we reduce it from 100 down to 80 or 85, there's still principal we're having to repay in '26, '27, '28. And what we've done is, we would basically structure it to be right to where there's enough revenue to pay for it. So we really don't give ourselves a lot of ability until some of this debt service starts really trending down, which is '29 and '30.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Demont.
It's great to be seen.
Now, I don't have my mic on. Yeah, it is good to see you. I've got a couple of questions, and I'm going to kind of be all over the place. And we'll start with a really fun one. You said Albemarle went to market and had 11 bidders. What is their credit rating?
They're AAA.
So they are?
They're just one notch above.
Just one notch above us. So is it reasonable to assume that we will have a similar number of suitors?
The only differential is their issue is not as large. And so when you get a larger issue, sometimes what happens is those bidders may team up and bid as one. So we may not have 11, but we've seen some of our larger issues seeing eight or nine bidders as well.
Okay. I just want to make sure we'll have plenty of dates to choose from for prom.
We will have plenty of dates, for sure.
Okay, good.
Great, that's a great analogy.
That's great.
Write that down. Use that.
And then on page 14 of your presentation, this is related also to, I guess, more preserving our credit rating. And so I'm wondering, in years '22, '23, '24, '25, while we stay above that 10% line, in your experience, does that negatively impact locality's credit rating? Could it?
You mean, being in that, in our?
Being above the 10%.
Between our lower and upper.
I know we're below the not to exceed, but I know that that little margin of time is uncomfortable from a, I'm personally very interested in maintaining a high credit rating.
Absolutely. So let me, let me answer it differently. If we didn't have the fund balances and your budget to actuals being consistent, things like that weren't in place, we may be having a different conversation.
Okay.
But because our, we've had great fund balances for years, you've been, you all have been good about, good stewards of keeping it in a good spot. I'm not concerned with the high debt levels, neither of the rating agencies. It's essentially, we're essentially the same place we were in 2019 when we went with some very large issuances to them. And they told us, they said, "We're comfortable, but you do have high debt levels. Everything else is great and strong." That's the one area that is weak in our, in our view. And both, both agencies said that, and we expect they'll probably say the same thing. The, 2019 was just prior to the pandemic, and now here we are, basically, I'll say on the other side of it. If we were in between, there may be a little bit more concern if we were going out doing a very large issue because they were still concerned about how local governments were going to fare. But now, we all know we've all come out pretty well from the local government standpoint.
And honestly, as we've worked to put this together, that was part of the thought, was getting passed. But the problem with getting passed now is we've seen our rates are starting to tick up, which is.
And it's what we told them on Thursday, is that we promised way back in 2013 when we had the Blacksburg issue that we wouldn't borrow until we came below our 12% number, and we waited and we did that. And we told them again, that's our plan, is not, you know, we told them we weren't planning on doing any other major bonds until we got back down and had the capacity.
I think it's important to note that you said that we have been good stewards, but we have Angie, Craig, and Mark and your help. So we also have very good advice that allows us to be responsible fiscally with the revenue that we do have. So the Federal Open Market Committee sets the federal interest rate, or the rate that banks borrow from each other. They specifically have in their meeting schedule that they are, so they're not scheduled to meet again until May 3rd or 4th, 3rd and 4th.
May 4th, right.
And it says they're allowed to meet on an emergency basis if economic events get out of hand. I know this is very much crystal balling it, but a lot's going on. What are your thoughts between March 28th and May 3rd or 4th?
So, that's actually a great question. A lot of people don't even realize that. So one of the things that, and this is, this is my educated, I guess, education given back to you guys.
You're one of those great advisors that we have.
Is that sometimes the Federal Open Market Committee, especially the chair, says things to influence the market without saying things, if that makes sense. And when, I don't know if those of you were paying attention, when they came out and did their minutes at the last meeting, they made their 50 basis, or 25 basis point increase, the market really had moved a whole lot. In fact, I was actually sitting there watching on CNBC, and the interest rates went up like 10 basis points within the hour and then came right back down. The market had built in the 25, and it had been built in for a couple of months. But what you may not have realized is, he spoke again, it was either Friday or Monday, some prepared remarks. But what he said, all of a sudden, the interest rates went up, like, the 10-year treasury went up 16 basis points after his remarks. I see that as, they were kind of controlling the market even though their meeting is not for another month and a half, a month and a week. So having, rates have gone up quite a bit since March 15th, when they last had their minutes. So I think they're okay. They don't want to see it to go too fast either, because then we could go the other direction. We've already seen an inversion of 30-year and 5-year today. So I think they've got to be careful. If they're going to meet again by emergency, it may be, okay, maybe 25 was too much, but I don't think that's going to happen. I think we're set. We're seeing the market. And what happens is our treasury market, the 10-year treasury and things like that, don't necessarily move in tandem with our taxes in market, but we've seen our taxes in market follow. And so we're seeing two basis points here, three basis points there. We've seen a 10-basis-point day. We saw one last week. So we are seeing those rates go up as well.
That's also, that's also why we've been really hustling to get this thing to market in April.
Yeah, I've been paying pretty close attention and trying to read between the coded messages and lines and.
Yeah, when we, when we, when we first said, "Okay, let's go," I said, "Okay, this is going to be a pretty quick market. Let's get moving." You know, until we actually were supposed to talk to the agencies tomorrow. And I realized that we were putting a little bit too much pressure on them to get rating back next week, so we pushed it back to Thursday. So we actually had the meeting with them before we had the meeting with you.
It nearly caused Angie and Lisa to have a stroke, but we got it done.
Yes. Hopefully, we took a lot of pressure off of them. We did some of the background work we were doing, but.
So that actually is a brilliant segue to what hopefully will be my final question. On your timeline, on page 15 in your packet, you have the school bonds on April 12th for sale, and then the county side on April 27th. I'm assuming that's contingent upon the EDA. So, and I'm not advocating for this, I'm asking your opinion. Would there be any advantage if we could call an EDA meeting earlier and get to market even two weeks earlier? And I'm sorry, Angie, if that's stressing you out, me even just saying that.
It's not stressing me out, but I think there are IRS code regulations that.
So obviously, I'll state the obvious, which is we want the big number first, so that's why we got the EDA first and the small one second. Bond council, this is an IRS rule. In order for us not to have to blend the yields between the two issues, we have to separate in about 15 days, which is why we did it that way.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. That was a great clarification.
Morning might have wanted to know, but that's.
Well, and I apologize if I'm, I'm not like laying awake at night, you might be worrying about these things, but, you know, a change in interest rate on 20 million or $120 million. a change in interest rate on $20 million or $120 million is significant. So I do have some anxiety about making sure, and it seems like everybody has, that we're moving as quickly as possible.
The good news is that we've, we've got a very flat yield curve. So the 10-year and 20-year rates are, are almost, they're flat. I mean, they really are. So at least if there's anything, they haven't, haven't gone up so much that it's caused our interest rates to go up even further. So like I said, I mean, if we can get in under 4%, I'm hoping maybe around the 350 mark, you know, things will hang in there for another couple of weeks, and then some.
What did we get in 2019? It was under 2, wasn't it? I should, I shouldn't have even...
I don't remember.
We call that the good old, that's the good old days, yes.
Yes, we took advantage.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Biggs.
Well, most of my questions have been asked, so that's great. And we just have such a great team. I remember when we didn't even have financial planners, so, you know, we've come a long way. I was, you know, entrusted too in what might happen if we had an emergency. But I think Blacksburg High School really taught everyone a lesson. And part of that lesson, forgive my editorial comments here, is the importance of, when you have county taxpayer money invested in buildings, you maintain them, whether they're county or whether they're schools. That's really a key ingredient. And that old Blacksburg High School building had problems all along that were not addressed. And the team that we have now on the county side, and the team we have on the school side, have really done a good job about, you know, making sure that these buildings are maintained. And then that goes along with what's being renovated and what's being built. And the careful, you know, oversight of everything. And that, along with the planning, and you guys always are hearing me talk about, you know, we have to have a plan, we've got to know how we're going to pay for things. All of this goes together. And we've come such a long way, and I think that everyone should be really proud of not just our financial planners and staff, but the board members that have participated along the way. So I'm really, I'm really happy with your presentation. I'm ready to go. That's it.
All right, Courtney. And again, to, for Supervisor Demont, we had asked that question, and Marty had given that explanation about, because we were wanting to go faster too, and that there's some regulation with the Virginia, with the VPSA, that there was that time regulation that we had already. So that's excellent for the public to hear that, to understand less why we're not moving any forward as there are regulations on the timeframe that we can do both. Courtney, going back again on page nine there, and this is a follow-up, and I think it's already mentioned, but just wanted to make sure. So, for the school at $100 million for the project, and maybe Angie can answer this too, the $3.2 million in additional funds that we would need for that, that's coming from our fund balance and possible additional revenue?
Right. It could come from either of those places, which are really basically the same. That's correct.
Okay, all right. And then, that would, if we do $100 million, that of course puts us lots of things to be concerned, because it'll put us right at that 10% to 12% of our ratio, that we like to be at 10% instead of the high end. And then that maxes out our capacity, not to be able to borrow until '20, '30?
From a cash flow standpoint.
From a cash.
Right. And this being the credit card limit standpoint on this slide, on slide 14 here, you do have some capacity, a little bit in '24. I think the number we calculated in '25 was, was it 45 million? I think was our number. I believe that was our number, 45 million of capacity. Meaning, the differential between that little tan line and the 12%, the top of the tan line and the 12%, but again...
That's capacity, not a...
That's capacity, still means you've got to find the revenues to pay for it, some of which could come from the general, because this isn't going between schools and general. This is total county.
Right.
Schools plus county, is that 45 million?
45, in 20, in 2025, we could issue 45.
If you had additional revenue.
If we have revenue.
That's right.
And that is at a higher interest rate, by the way, I did...
And at a higher interest rate.
We were very conservative with that, much higher interest rate. But, still, just, just in case rates are higher at that point, we should be able to handle that. But again, it means you're having to come up with some revenues, depending upon whether it's schools or county. That part, obviously, is your discussion.
And when you're discussing with the, the borrow, in case, and knock on wood, we hope that we don't have any type of emergency. But if there was an emergency, when you, back in 2012, when we had the Blacksburg High School incident, and you promised them we're not going to have that again, what, how long is that promise for?
Well, it's, unless there's an emergency.
Unless there's an emergency.
Right.
By their definition of what emergency is.
Right. I mean, we could go through that, but then we'd put ourselves in real jeopardy of, of being downgraded down to the next level or two, you never know. So, and it also depends on other things that are going on. Economy, your local economy, the bigger economy.
We did, we did hear comments and talking to the rating agencies last week. They did commend us, and that being the board of the strong fiscal stewardship that you've done, and the fact that they recognize that was a, hopefully a one-time issue, and that we did what we said we were going to do. We would work it down as quickly as we could, and we wouldn't come back to market until we had it back where it needed to be.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, just another pat on your back is the S and P in particular does something called a Financial Management Assessment, and there are certain questions that they ask, I think there are eight of them. And you basically have to have yes to each of them. Some of them are budget to actual, that it's provided to you on a pretty regular basis, which you do get. It's part of being physically prudent and managing. And you, you meet all of those and have the strongest rating that they give for that. Not everybody has that. Part of it is planning, that you have a five-year plan, and things like that. So that's, and you, and you had that in 2019, so it's not something we just created. And I will say that not all of my clients do that. Even though we say this is something you need to do, some of them don't want to go that extra mile to do it. So you've taken those, those steps to put yourself, because the way I look at it, it's not going to downgrade you if you don't do them, but it gives you more credit. It's almost like doing extra credit in school. And so we've, we've done that.
We're A students.
I want to be triple A students, but, but we, we keep, you know, there are some things that are just honestly out of our control. But I think the things we can control, we're doing a really good job at.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any follow-up comments or questions by the supervisors?
I do.
Supervisor, go ahead.
When you talk about new revenues, it's just like when Mark comes to talk to us mid-year and budget season, "Hey, we did better than I had projected". It's that kind of new revenue?
It would need to be ongoing new revenue. Or at least, we would need to have enough revenue to cover the beginning of the issuance, like we are this time.
But we have a lot in reserves that could be reallocated, or no?
We have a, right now, we do. We don't know what is going to happen with the economy, so we've not planned to spend all of that. And in a few minutes, when we go over the CIP for the county, we have some suggestions of how we could spend some of those funds on county projects. But we do, right now, have enough to cover these items that we've talked about.
So, every year, Mark comes to us and says, "This is what your new revenues are this year, without raising taxes", which this year was a couple million dollars or whatever. Is that true?
5.4 million.
5.4 million dollars. How much borrowing capacity could be covered by $5 million? More than $45 million?
Once we get out to, so, so, go back to...
So the, the idea of quote-unquote "having to raise taxes" just isn't really relevant at this moment in time.
But that 5.4 million is also funding salary increases, operational increases.
One year.
Operational.
That's one year.
It's ongoing.
Yeah, but the next year, we get whatever the new number is.
Well, right, that's, that's, that's true, but we have some real concerns about, that's one thing we've been talking about through this budget process, is while we've seen some really strong revenue increases this year, we're not sure, long-term, that that's sustainable, especially with the sales tax numbers.
That I, that I do understand, but...
And if we used all of the 5.4 million, for example, this year.
I'm not asking us to use it all, but...
Right, but if we did, it would cut back on what we did for everybody, for the county, and how much we could give to the schools for operations.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, what would be the ongoing cost for a $45 million bond sale right now?
And you're talking about in 2025.
That's right, assuming that maybe it's not 4%, but maybe it's 5%.
Yeah, you use 4.5 when we write our numbers.
Maybe you use 4, just to make the math easy.
No, I understand. No, I was going to look, because we, we've got some, just give me a sec here. Back in my younger days, when I used to carry an HP calculator with me.
There you go, 12C.
But now I'm relying on some other numbers that we've run here. Where is that?
I, I don't think anybody wants to raise taxes, like, is, is part of my point here.
So, let's, let's use this as our, I'll, I'll, actually, I can pull it up here. Use this as sort of our bogey. So 20 million, using that roughly 3.5% for the moment, is 1.4, I'm going to round up, say 1.4 million on 20-year, on a 20-year basis, so...
What's it on an annualized?
So 20 million at 1.5 with the higher, let's just say with the higher interest cost, it's 1.5 million per, per year, annual, at 20 million. So 40 million would be 3 million.
3 million dollars in three years. It would be each year, starting in three years.
Starting in three years, beginning in three years.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Sounds great, thank you.
Yep, you bet. I was trying to find something where we'd calculate, I was like, rather than try to figure it out, just do the, interpret it.
Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate your time and explanation.
Madam Chair, at this point, what we'd like to do is have a discussion with the board. As, as you've heard from Mark and, and now from Courtney, time is of the essence as we're moving forward with determining the amount of debt to issue. The information that we've shared with you tonight assumes a potential maximum borrowing of 120 million, 100 for the schools, 20 for the county. I know there have been some discussions among board members about the dollar amount that you have a comfort level with as far as borrowing for schools. And then we also are going to share some information related to what we think, thank you, Angie, what we think is an appropriate amount for you to consider for the county's CIP as well, so... What Angie's handing out is the county's CIP. We'll talk about that in a, in a minute. First, with the bigger issue with the schools, just allow the board an opportunity to discuss your thoughts on the school borrowing.
All right, well, I will, we'll start off with Supervisor Shepherd. Any comments on the issuance of the school bond?
I'm scared to borrow $100 million. That being said, it sounds like it doesn't matter how much we borrow. If we need to go back, we won't be able to without some way to pay for it. So I don't know if that has any bearing for anybody else, but...
Supervisor Fidzikowski.
We have talked quite a bit in the last two years about Christiansburg High School and the renovations and numbers. I think we all remember, they started lower, and I don't think anybody is surprised that they came back higher. Things have changed. But unless, I've been missing meetings or something, I don't know what they're doing with the other 15 million. Is another school getting renovated?
It's our understanding and the request that has come from the schools. I think the school board voted on a resolution up to $100 million, and it was 85 for Christiansburg High School. The total is 95 million, 10 million of which will be used from school funding, ARPA funding. And then the 15 million is to be used for various Blacksburg Strand elementary school projects. But I don't, I don't know that they've been further identified. Tommy, thank you for coming up.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, I'm looping away here.
You're good, you're good. Getting you up with the 15 million?
Yes, so the 85 million was the CHS portion, with 10 million coming out of ESER III to get us to the $95 million mark. The 15 million would be basically held in reserve, for lack of a better term. Blacksburg is an elementary strand, and really, every one of the elementary schools there are at that point of renovations and/or additions, depending on, you know, how the populations and, and the developments take place. But we see that that's really going to be the next place for the school system, is the increase in students in the Blacksburg Elementary Strands.
Yeah, and if you had a plan, it sure would make me feel more comfortable. But right now, what, what I'm hearing through my ears is 85 million for a high school and 15 million for a slush fund.
Well, it wouldn't be a slush fund, I can tell you that. You know, the district has done numerous plans over the years, much more than any district that I've ever seen. The problem is that they get put on the shelf and then nobody ever uses it. The district right now is going through a very comprehensive plan, one that I've done in three other districts. And it becomes a living, breathing document on which we would have it for the Blacksburg side. But I can see how you're coming, you know, with a slush, but that's not, Mr. Fidzikowski, in any way, shape, or form, an attempt, you know, with that 15 million to put it as a slush. It would be a $15 million that, due to the timing, made sense to borrow it today rather than wait for some, you know, for a later date. But it was intended to be for something other than CHS.
Now, you, you've told us at the last meeting about the problems with, I think it was Gilbert Linkus with the heating there.
Or Kips.
Okay, Kips, I'm sorry. So, yeah, that's, that's a thing that needs to be addressed with capital money. There's no doubt about it, and that would be a great use for it.
Correct.
But it would be nice for us to know where the rest of the money is going to be applied.
Well, you're, if it was 15 million for Kips, Kips would eat that up. Kips would eat it up.
And you know, you're not going to get any more money for a long time.
I'm well, well, rare of it. And, you know, the, the challenge is, to me, because, you know, I'm probably not going to be here in five years, okay? But in, but the challenges that the school system faces are not three years out. They're five, 10, and 15, and 20 years out. You look at today where the growth is in Blacksburg, Prices Fork with their two developments, one right behind Prices Fork and one right across the street. Those two developments we're projecting could generate 350 elementary-age students. At that point in time, Prices Fork is well over capacity. Prices Fork, when it was built, was not built for an expansion. So Prices Fork today has what they call outside classrooms. You can do four classrooms, convert outside space, but that's going to generate about 100 seats. If you're adding 350 seats to the school, I've got a mismatch on capacity and the school. So then it becomes, what assets does the district have at its disposal? Kips is the most closest, or Bellevue. Bellevue's problem is the slope that we got on the back end. So trying to do any additional additions at Bellevue would be extremely costly to put in place. So then it becomes Kips. Kips is designed that you can do an addition very similar to what was done at Falling Branch. You could add about 10 to 16 classrooms, depending how you played it out. But then you go, "Okay, that sounds great today". Look at Margaret Beeks. Margaret Beeks has a development of 56 units going right next door to it. Then you've got the development between the back end of Margaret Beeks and Kroger's. That's 100-plus units. Then you've got the development taking place at Legacy and Main. That's another 56 units, income-based housing. All of a sudden, if those fill up, Margaret Beeks is at capacity and needing more. Gilbert Linkus, with the, you know, foundation and what they're doing with the apartments, those will generate students who are going to bring family members in, going to bring children in. Those children need a school, they're going to Gilbert Linkus. I'm not trying to scare anybody. I'm just trying to say that whatever the schools does, it needs to be a plan that goes out 20 to 50 years. It's one that gets, it's a living... It's one that gets, it's a living, breathing document that needs to get, and like I said, I won't be here in five years. No disrespect, it's been great, but I'm past that point. But it's something that needs to be thought of, because every time you spend a dollar, as y'all have said so eloquently today in the meeting, every time you spend a dollar of bond money, it's gone for the next 20 years. That's reality. So you need to make a decision for the next, not five, for schools, not five years out. You really are making it for 50 years out. So it's not a slush fund. It's not intended to be a slush fund. For us to even consider using it, we would need school board approval, and then obviously, the county administration approval, and then y'all as the board of supervisors approval. And I know, and rightfully so, that if I came to you asking to use those funds, you would hold me at a very high standard. And we're not anywhere close to having that kind of conversation.
Well, I mean, that is kind of scary language, but I'm okay with it. But the 15 million dollars isn't gonna fix any of those problems, right?
No. Right now, there's no intent, the 15 million dollars is not in our plan at CHS. That 15 million dollars, as I put into the bond documents, is for future school capital projects. And I do mean it. I couldn't tell you what project that would go to.
Yeah.
And I'm being very, and I'm being, and I'm being very honest with you. That's why I didn't put anything specific in that plan.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor King.
Thank you for being here. Just my concern is, if we borrow 100 million dollars, we're tapped out. If we borrow 85 million, we're tapped out. I mean, it's just like they said, you know, you use your credit card. I don't do my home business that way. I mean, if I got $10,000 on credit card, I don't go 9999. It just don't happen. And I'm just worried about what will happen down the road if something does happen. As has been stated before, you know, we've been good steward of taxpayers' money. And I know the schools have needs, county has needs. I understand that. But I just have a big concern topping out as far as we can go with the revenue that we have. That's all.
Supervisor Demonts.
Well, where are you gonna be in five years?
Probably on the beach in Florida with grandchildren.
Okay, okay. You were just hinting around about it. I had to check and.
Yes, ma'am. It'll be retirement going to Florida.
For the 15 million, as you are aware, my district is in the town of Blacksburg. And so I am particularly in tune to the capacity issues. My son attended Gilbert Linkus when there was a god-awful mobile thing outside. And I know that we've got mobile units at other schools in Blacksburg already. Harding Avenue.
Yes, ma'am.
Where else are there mobile units in Blacksburg?
In the Blacksburg community, that's the only ones I'm using right now.
Okay. How much open capacity do you have in the Blacksburg Elementary Strand total in all of the elementary schools in Blacksburg?
I don't have that number in my head. I've got some capacity, but not as much.
Not as much as what's.
No.
And I'm very, also very aware of all of the development that's coming and is ongoing in the town of Blacksburg. I'm wondering if you can commit to us that 15 million going towards Blacksburg Elementary Schools into that strand.
That obviously would have to be a discussion that I present to our school board and have the board vote on that. I mean, I can tell you from an administration standpoint, you build it based off of what your projected enrollment is. And you match that enrollment with your capacity. And then from there, you start drilling back how you best, working with the school board, was the best way to maximize use of the assets. Because I've never seen a district that had enough money to do everything they wanted to do. It's just not possible. But at the end of the day, you gotta have seats for students. If we don't have seats, we can't educate. And so that's why the first and the most critical step is making sure that we have seats for students. Then we start getting down into buildings and the condition of buildings. And, you know, at the end of the day, you end up having to prioritize a dollar. And that's all you got. You know, how are you gonna maximize that expenditure? But you can't think that you got two when you only have one. That's the thing I think, you know, we're trying to do with the district is make sure that we're being good stewards of the limited resources that are available. And make sure that we spend those as wisely as we possibly can. That's why we talked at the last meeting. We put into our capital side right at about 4 million dollars so that we can make sure we've got the garage done, we can make sure CES, CPS, and BES are done, we can make sure that we get CHS off the ground and get it rolling. And then you gotta start having conversations with the board to, what's the best way to spend it? Because those dollars will go quickly. And we need to make sure we spend them as wisely as possible.
One of your board members, Ms. Franklin, has very eloquently, many times in my tenure on this board, said it is Christiansburg High School's turn. And I have never disagreed with her. I completely, fully agree. Based on my experience and knowledge prior to serving in this capacity, I will say that it is Blacksburg Elementary Schools, all of them. It's their turn next. Now, it is not, I'm not presuming to know all of the ins and outs of all of your facilities. That is my perspective from this board, that that's what we've been hearing for a long time, is that that's the direction that we're going. So I would really like to see if we do 100 million dollar bond issue, that that 15 million goes to addressing capacity issues in Blacksburg Strand.
I would be delighted to present it to the school board. But CHS, it is their turn.
Oh, completely.
You just have to be, what's the best use of the dollars you have? And maximize it with the return that you're gonna get off of that investment.
So that, this is, it's like I'm setting people up for brilliant questions that I have next, because I do have a final question about Christiansburg High School. Has the scope of that project changed since it was last presented to us?
It is going through its life right now, where we're bringing on the contractor under the CMR so that we can work with the architect and really drill down and do the best construction programs that we can do maximizing the dollars. So from that standpoint, the answer is yes. From the standpoint of, we've reduced rooms or things like that, not at this point in time. Our hope is to get the CMR executed right in the first of April. At that point, have a GMP first of May to mid-May. We've submitted to the town of Christiansburg on Friday of last week a plan for the bus loop and to do some outer work on the outer side. That way, where the addition is, which comes off the admin and does an L shape, that we could do that starting as soon as the town gave us the building permit, which we would project in November, which would then open that addition by December of 2023. And then go immediately into renovations of the rest of the space. So that's the current, at a very high, high level. But yes, ma'am, we're starting to tweak it, but we're not at the level I think you were asking about. But that's where we're heading to, very quickly.
I ask that for a few reasons, to make sure that we're current on the information that we have in case we're asked, you know, what do we know? And then also, just out of caution for preserving what we can for other schools.
We're doing our value engineering.
Yeah, going into this, assuming that there's gonna be 15 million left over for other schools, and then wanting to be cautious about making sure that happens.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Supervisor Bone.
Bellevue is right at 8 million dollars.
And CES and CPS?
CPS is coming in at 16, and CES is coming in 11 and some change.
And a lot of the construction that's actually happening in Blacksburg isn't gonna be like this year. But it will start hitting our schools next year. I'm thinking about the Prices Fork developments. They're projected over the next 10 years.
But even if, even if you had the money, I couldn't start. I mean, you know, we, CHS, we're sitting here in the best case thinking we can turn dirt, really turn dirt in November, December, if everything was perfect. We've been working on that for over a year. So even if you gave me whatever, X, and you said, Tommy, go, and we're gonna do school ABC, just because I haven't talked to our board. I mean, you're looking at best case, eight months, more likely 12 to 15 months before I can turn the first bit in dirt.
And the reason why we're doing this is because the rates aren't gonna go lower anytime soon.
That and capacity is gonna get tighter, and the new students are gonna get worse. So it's trying to match all that. You're right.
So the 15 million dollars, do we just put it in the bank and earn a half a percent? Or what do we, what happens to that money?
It would be invested, and then in the current market, we wouldn't have a problem with this, but we couldn't earn more than we're paying, so.
It's not a problem.
So it'll cost us a little bit of money to just, it won't cost us the whole interest rate, though?
It would not cost the whole interest rate. That's correct.
Courtney's got a thought on that.
And it will float. The investment which we typically put it in, which is the state pool, will float up as these short-term rates rise. So even though we're locking in our borrowing rate, the investment rate will increase.
Any chance while you're up here that we can actually put some of our reserves in that same account?
That's the treasurer's decision.
Is it possible to put some of the reserves in that account?
Not in that particular account, because it's only for bond proceeds, but similar account.
And what's the rate that that's getting right at this moment?
The pool account, the last time I looked, I think it was around, it lags. So it's not gonna jump as quickly, because they're constantly investing out. I think the last time I looked at it, it was like 25 or 30 basis points. But it was at five not long, you know, way back, so it's gotten up there comparatively. But the.
What are you talking about, 25 basis points?
A quarter of a percent.
Quarter of 1%.
That's it?
Yeah, because it's short-term.
Okay. What would be the consequence if we just borrowed 85 and borrowed the 15, you know, when you actually would use it? Yeah, I don't know.
Sorry, what was that?
What would be the consequence if we borrowed the 85 now and then got the 15, you know, two years later?
We could do that. Interest rates may be 50, 100 basis points higher. So you're paying more over 20 years. So the way I like to think about it is, I'd rather lock it in now and lose a little bit in that time period that it's sitting in the bank before it's used, because that's for 18 months, 24 months, probably most, rather than pay 20 years of interest, you know, at a higher rate.
So let's say that the school board and Mr. Krantz comes and says, okay, we're ready to spend it in Blacksburg. But if there was a catastrophe between now and a year or two from now, we could use it for the catastrophe, right?
The way the resolution is written, I believe, it's for Christiansburg High and other school projects. So it doesn't actually say which schools it has to be spent on. You couldn't use it for the courthouse or anything like that.
And that's the bond resolution, as Mr. Krantz said earlier, it would still, any use of that 15 million dollars is gonna be approved by the school board, requested of the county, the board of supervisors has to approve to release the funds for that project.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if you need to stay up, but you're welcome to stay up. The additional money on top of the 15 million that you have extra and primed and ready for the Blacksburg Strand Elementary Schools, that's an addition, that's, you also have your penny or two pennies on an annualized basis that you keep loading on top of.
Correct.
You know, just keep accumulating until you're ready for your next project, right? Courtney, one last question, sorry. Interest rates, I mean, you just said 100 basis points, so you only think that it might go up one point in the next couple of years?
It's already gone up 1% since January 1.
Right.
So it's hard to know where the, where do we, where does it peak and maybe the cycle come back down again? A lot of factors out there.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Okay. I want to sort of follow up with what Supervisor Demonts was talking about. It's very, very critical that we think about the Blacksburg Elementary Schools. This board, and I as a board member, have supported projects in every single strand that have needed it. And now we're back to Blacksburg. Let's talk a little bit about, let's start with Harding Avenue. Harding Avenue was built in the early 1970s. It's the only open school remaining. It was built at the same time Reiner Elementary was built, Christiansburg Primary School was built, and the Old Shawsville Elementary School was built. Harding is the only one remaining that either hasn't changed to another school or hasn't been renovated, okay? Margaret Beeks and Gilbert Linkus. You know, they've had a little reservation, little renovations along the way, but they haven't been a Bellevue. They haven't, and Falling Branch. Falling Branch and Kips were built at the same time. Falling Branch has been taken care of. Kips hasn't. We've approved all these projects on Prices Fork Road as a county, and Blacksburg is approving projects within the town. And so, as you've said, you know, the population, the school population is gonna increase. We have an opportunity to borrow 15 million dollars to go toward some of the cost of some of the school projects in Blacksburg. We have an opportunity to do that. And I feel like, you know, we've always been supportive of all the strands, and I would hope that support would come tonight. We don't know specifically what it's gonna be spent on, like Steve was asking, but we also have a chance, April 12th, to talk to the school board and say, hey, it's our understanding, this is what you've talked about, you know, we're on board, we realize Blacksburg, it's Blacksburg's turn, as Supervisor Demonts has said. And I think that we maybe need to think about that, because everyone's been, to me, it's a matter of fairness. You know, when you're trying to cover all the other strands in the county, you know, let's think about the Blacksburg Strand, too. So I think that I'm very supportive of going ahead and trying to get the whole 100 million. And I think we can talk about, you know, with the school board when we talk to them about what their thinking is, because you can't speak for them. But all along, we've been talking about the need in Blacksburg. And the only, you know, I guess Harding's the only one like right now that has trailers, so.
Correct.
You know, we gotta think about these things. Where are those children going in Daryl's district? Daryl, what are we gonna do? We've got two big developments, you know, coming right near your district, you know? And like Tommy said, they're not all gonna fit in Prices Fork. So we gotta think about these things. It's like, I guess you guys probably are tired of me saying this, but you have to plan for the future, and you have to think it through, and you have to have a way to begin planning for the financial planning for it. And this is a way, it's a baby step. 15 million, like Steve said, is not gonna, you know, solve all the problems, but it's a baby step. I'm willing to take that step, so I support going for the whole 100 million dollars for the schools.
All right, so we are here back, and you said about two years. In 2019, we have been talking about Christiansburg High School, about renovations, about that timeframe.
Yes, ma'am, about that.
And we're not even starting the renovations yet, right? 2022, we've got the plans and design going.
Now, what you gotta try to do is match up your expectations of what you're gonna spend money.
Right, yes, sir. My point is, is that it's time for Christiansburg High School to be the priority. We haven't even got Christiansburg High School built yet.
Correct.
And we haven't even decided on the money for Christiansburg High School. And not that we don't need needs for Blacksburg Strands, but this, this right now is for Christiansburg High School. but this, this right now is for Christiansburg High School. Um, I am concerned, and not that we don't agree that we do need to plan for the future. I do agree that, that the strands in, in Blacksburg, Blacksburg are going to look like they're needing next. In fact, I do believe that's what your plan for the school board was, that after the Christiansburg High School was done, we would look at that in two thousand and twenty-seven for Harding Avenue, and then the other elementary schools after that. And that was a presentation that you gave us in October, and I think again to the school board possibly in January. Um, so that was their vision of plan to move forward as well. Um, I am concerned that if we max out at a hundred million, we are at our capacity and our affordability, which means in order to have more money to, for other needs, um, for the school and, for the school, we would have to have a way to afford that. Um, and so that would be more revenue, not revenue in addition to what we already have, because that's now going to be part of operation if, if the board goes ahead and votes on that um, for our budget. So I'm concerned with the capacity, affordability, and that I want to make sure Christiansburg High School is done first. And that is the priority, and that was the goal, and the, 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 when presented to us, was the priority. Um, eighty-five million, that will get the project Christiansburg High School, along with the ten million for Ursa, completed, unless there are hiccups.
Unless we run into some kind of challenge that we're not aware of.
And then you still, and the school does have four million dollars capital right now?
Correct, but I think those dollars would be the ones that you're going to use for your air conditioning projects. That can be, um, depending on how CHS works out, um, to complete the work on, on the, uh, friend school building and fitting that into the campus. So, um, you know, most of the time when the school system is headed a project, they've used their extra money to complete projects. CHS is so big, you don't have as much of a project, but then those funds could be used to complete that project, depending on what, you know, what's needed to close it out.
Okay, very good. Um, so yeah, so I, I'm good with eighty-five million dollars to move ahead and get Christiansburg High School completed. Um, not that we don't have needs, I understand we have needs, but right now, we don't even have a vote or a plan from the school board um, to what that fifteen million dollars would be used for exactly, other than capital fund, capital projects and the elementary schools.
And, and till the board would, would vote, I mean, I could probably give you a list, but I mean, our board has to make that decision. And, and we still are compiling data to make sure the best, as I said, once you spend that dollar, it's gone for twenty years. And I'm, you know, I really want to make sure that they're making the best decision possible, because it's a twenty-year decision.
And I would agree that the next need would be the Blacksburg Elementary Schools.
Yes, ma'am, it just becomes which one and what priority that you want to do it in. And understand if there's a shortfall, which I'm afraid there potentially could be, understand what the dinging effect, what the impact of that will be if populations grow, um, at certain levels.
Any follow-up questions or comments, Supervisor Demontz?
Um, just one follow-up comment, um, when Courtney was coming up and back. Um, one of the additional things to consider, if we take out in two parts eighty-five and fifteen, is there's a cost each time. So it's, um, you said it was half a million to do the bond issuance for a hundred million. So let's assume that stays at half a million. Well, then you're looking at probably a six-figure cost again, that is not recoverable, but is lumped in right now with where we are. Am I correct in drawing that conclusion, Courtney?
That's right. I mean, it's, it won't be that high, but.
Right.
If we're just borrowing fifteen million, twenty million, ten million, it'll be a lot lower, but that's right.
So the way that I hear it is that there's not only an admin cost, but there's also a potential risk, uh, just due to market volatility.
Exactly, interest rate risk. I looked up the rates too, just to be clear. So the bond proceeds SNAP program is at forty-one basis points, so I wasn't far off. The treasurer's L G I P is at thirty-three, what it's worth.
That was my only follow-up, thank you.
And if we borrow a hundred, I'm sorry.
Oh, my only thing is, I want to make it clear that every board member supports Christiansburg High School.
Oh, yeah.
That has always been the top priority. What we have a chance to do right now is to have a little bit of extra money, and as Supervisor Demontz has, um, stated, at the same cost. Okay, so here's something that might go with what Sheri is thinking. Let's just pretend for a minute that you've got your eighty-five million and your ten million that you're going to use, and all of a sudden, there's a cost override of two million. That two million could come out of the fifteen million. Just saying. You know, I mean, I think, I think, um, you sort of have to look at the whole picture. That's, that's my opinion. And, um, I support, I still am supportive of the hundred million.
I have one more thought on that note. Um, what do you think the possibility of only needing fifteen million in three to five years is? I mean, I think, once we get to that point, we're going to need more, we're no, we're going to need more than fifteen million anyway.
Right. Yeah, but do you want to, do you want to have it at three and a half percent, or do you want it at five percent?
I don't know, my crystal ball don't work like that. I can't tell you. I mean, who knows what the interest rate is.
So we've got an expert here.
Yeah, but he's.
Mr. Courtney.
He's guessing just like us.
Well, he's done well for us in the past, let me tell you.
He is.
Um, so, uh, it, take me back when we started thinking about CPS, CES, and BES.
Mm-hmm.
Where'd that money come from, and how quickly did we spend it?
Well, remember, we were thinking about building a new elementary school.
Mm-hmm.
And unfortunately, the scenario we thought we could play out didn't work out the way we thought.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then it became, how do we go about addressing capacity challenges in the Christiansburg area? And so we took those three schools, and with their additions and their renovations, we added roughly fourteen new classrooms on the low end.
Thirty million dollars.
Thirty-five, thirty-five million dollars. You know, so we addressed theirs there. And I think, as Ms. Biggs said, one thing, keep in mind, we've, we've done estimates on the costs on CHS, but until we really get down to the nuts and bolts, and that's the, the construction drawings that we're finalizing as we speak, you're not going to really know what the cost of that building is.
But we have to make the decision tonight, how much we're going to borrow.
Correct.
And if we only borrow eighty-five thousand, and the estimate is above that, then you might, I mean.
You got to value engineer, you got to value engineer it to fit with inside the dollar amount.
High School may not be the Christiansburg High School that everybody's thinking it's going to be like.
Possible. I mean, you're going to have to, you, you, no matter what dollar amount you get, I mean, of course, from a school system, I'm going to those larger amounts they're going to give me, because it makes it easier. But at the end of the day, you've got to, you've got to design the project to fit with inside the budget.
Mm-hmm.
And, 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 you know, we're at that point right now of completing the construction dock so we can get it to sound G M P. Now, will that G M P be above ninety-five million or below ninety-five? If I gave you a guess, it would be that, just a wild guess. Um, but as I said, with the plan, understanding that there's no new dollars until, what, twenty-thirty, right, Angie? Is that it? Say basically. So you're seven years out. In seven years, you got Margaret Beeks heading the fan, you got Gilbert Linkus coming online, you've got the challenges at, at Prices Fork, you got the challenges at Kips Elementary. So you've got challenges that we know are going to hit in the next seven years. That, that are.
Where does the money come from?
Well, and that's what I was going to say, it's far greater than any sum of money we've talked about tonight.
So should we not get the fifteen million because, and, and wait three years when you're ready to actually spend it?
I, I think if you got the fifteen million, one, it gives you subject to, you want CHS not to be built to fit the fifteen million. You want CHS to have what CHS needs, but not be, I, I don't want to use the word extravagant, but you, you don't understand what I'm trying to say, is you don't want, because I've got extra money, I'm going to do something else. By the same token, I think in the four years that I've worked with each of y'all, you all care about every school inside this county. I've never seen y'all as a board, I've never seen the school board pick and choose schools, that's never happened. Y'all have always truly had the best interest of, of, just like the school board did, of the school system in totality. And I think if you have the fifteen million, it gives you the ability to do whatever tweaking that the school board and the board of supervisors will want to do on a CHS if needed. If it's not needed at CHS, it gives you the ability between the two boards to zero in on, we have this much, and with this, we can do this, or this, or whatever the options are. And between the two boards, you agree, we can, you know what I'm saying, you kind of pick and choose. And you lay out your plan for the next seven years. Whereas if you don't do the closing today, then depending on what your rates may be, it may not be something that's attractive at the appropriate time. So, um, I don't like debt, just understand personally, I'm not a believer in debt. I, I never have. But, but sometimes you've got to have your cash sitting on the side, just so, and you know you're going to spend it. Now, with projects, I wish I could sit here and tell you exactly which ones it's going to go to. I can't. I wish I could tell you that CHS.
Five projects that the money, some money in the near future is going to go to.
Without a doubt.
Right, so.
Without a doubt.
It's just a matter of figuring out. And, and any one of them needs to be worked on in the next seven years.
Before then, but yes, ma'am.
Right, so the money is needed before seven years.
Correct.
So how much do we want to pay for the money? Is that the, is that the, what the question is right now on the table?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we want to pay it at the rate, right now, economies of scale, without the extra, uh, you know, admitted, whatever costs, the half a million dollars, or a little less? Or wait and pay more, not just in interest, but for.
Closing costs.
Closing costs and stuff like that.
Yes, ma'am.
And do we trust you all and ourselves to be able to work together to not willy-nilly have that money go to build extravagance, but necessary improvements to our schools?
I think y'all as a board and our school board can work together. And I think y'all can make the best decision possible for the students of my government county and the citizens of my government county. I do think y'all can work together and accomplish that.
Let's see if I have one more question, apologize. Um, and either way, whether we wait or whether we do it now, we're still good stewards of our money. Is that true?
Absolutely.
Okay, there's not, one is better than the other. That's what I understand. Okay, last question. Um, I was looking at your wonderful packet that you just put together on page five. And so the county's borrowing twenty million dollars for fiscal twenty-three for twenty-one million dollars worth of projects. Am I reading that correctly?
We're going to talk about that in a minute. After the school part, we'll talk about that.
All right. I don't have any more questions, Mr. Krantz, thank you.
Chair Bovins.
Supervisor Fizikowski?
Um, I guess what I'm really most worried about is, have we ever done this before? Borrowed an extra fifteen million for no purpose other than general spending?
I'm looking at Angie and Courtney, I, in the, I've been here since two thousand and nine, and every borrowing we've had has been assigned to a project um, that I'm aware of. Is there any?
So we'd be, we'd be, uh, setting a new precedent now, so that every time we borrow, I mean, if I want to buy a new car, and I go to the bank and I say, well, the, the car's fifty thousand dollars, but I want to borrow fifty-five so I can pay my taxes for the next five years on it or something. People don't do that, and we've never done that. And it's not that I don't think you could use the fifteen million, I know you can use it, I know you can. But this is not how we do business. I just, this is just very unusual that we are going to borrow fifteen million dollars for twenty years, and we don't know what it's going to go for. Is it going to go for a roof repair on a school that we end up bulldozing five, ten years down the road? I mean, we don't know. So, to me, if you were to tell me that fifteen million dollars is going to fix Kips just the way you need it, I would be all aboard, because that's a project. But when it's going into a bank account that we're just going to take money out of, and we're going to be paying on that debt for twenty years, and whatever, whatever you use it for, uh, new parking lots or something, whatever.
Right.
They're not going to last for twenty years. You'll be paving that parking lot again. I mean, there's just, I've just never seen or heard of this board doing that before. Because if it's a great idea, why don't we do it every time we borrow money? Just borrow it, put it in the bank, and we'll just tell the taxpayers, don't worry about it. If we can't meet the, uh, payments, we'll just raise taxes. Which, I'm not saying we're raising taxes. But, uh, it's just, it's just an unusual way to spend taxpayers' money. We're going to borrow fifteen million dollars just to leave it sitting around until somebody decides what they're going to use it on. It's just not right. So I'm, I'm really, at this point, I'm not in favor of it.
Supervisor Demontz?
Courtney, does anybody, do any municipalities do this?
I think the situation here, and, you know, it's been twenty-something years we've been working together, is a little different here because we're seeing such crazy inflationary numbers.
That's right.
On these bids, because we're hearing that everywhere. And so, I'm not trying to put words in the school system's mouth, it sounds like they're looking for a little bit of a cushion. Um, I don't, I mean, we've done these in the past where we've said, okay, we're going to give you so much for this project, and there's probably been left over, and it's been spent somewhere. Or it came in over budget and they either value engineered, or we came up with some additional dollars to help. I think the difference here is that we're seeing such wide swings in bids at this point. That's probably why, you know, we're at this point. Um, did I, and I'm going to maybe be mediated here for a second. Did I hear you guys that, that if we did the one hundred, that both boards could, would have a say-so on how all that fifteen was spent?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that's unusual?
No.
But would be helpful, I think, because if that way you get a say-so, it's your bond, your one's borrowing, it's your bond proceeds. As long as you're not giving them a blank check, you guys at least can dictate whether it goes to Blacksburg High, or, or if the bids come in five million over and they don't have the extra cash on hand to do it, maybe you give them part of the fifteen for that, and maybe the other ten goes for Blacksburg. Just a thought, as I'm hearing it, that I'm kind of hearing some of this firsthand, so.
And that process is identical to how it should work for all capital projects, so it's not just unique to this bond issue.
Yeah, we just, we, when the sale, the county just doesn't say, here's, here's a hundred million, go, go at it.
Right.
We release it based on the project.
Mm-hmm, okay. And so, um, Mr. Krantz, we're talking about seven years maybe needing this money, but really, for, for example, the Blacksburg Strand Elementary, some of the Blacksburg Strand Elementary Schools, but really, you could start using that right now.
Oh, you easily, I mean, you could do Harding Elementary, where you've got four portables plus the restroom portables, and you decide to remove that. You could do the addition and renovation at Kips. Um, Margaret, Margaret Beeks is, I mean, their growth is there, um, kind of like Prices, Prices Fork. Um, so, the, you, you've got needs today. Which ones you're going to do first versus which ones you're going to put on the side, and how you're going to account those sides, because their needs are going to continue to be there. That's going to be the challenge for you and the school board.
Within, what's the shortest, shortest amount of time that we would work on a project that was necessary and would use that fifteen million dollars?
Um,
Considering that you've got a big job in front of you with Christiansburg High School.
You know, if you were going to do a Harding Elementary, Harding Elementary is very similar to what we're doing at CPS. Um, now, we're in a different locale, different municipality, so our building code's going to be different, and the rules that we've got to comply with. Um, but at Kips Elementary, you know that that's an addition and a renovation, very similar to what we did at Falling Branch.
So how quick could we address? So, how quick could we address Kips to the maximum capacity?
I mean, if, if, if I had the dollars, we would do our architects immediately. We would begin the drawing phase, meeting with the town of Blacksburg, determining exactly what we're doing, meets where we're going, that we know any utility issues that may present itself. And then, we would be in a position to be able to get a solid price.
That's all, isn't that all subject to the school board agreeing that that's the-
Correct, correct. That's, exactly. It's, I'm just talking theoretical. I'm not making a recommendation of any stretch of the imagination. I'm just talking a theoretical. Because things can change.
Uh-huh.
I mean, you know, in all honesty, Margaret Beeks probably will come out of the ground faster than the developments at Prices Fork. They've been a little bit slower. I mean, I know they're working hard and things are moving, but it hasn't moved quite as fast as what we were initially thinking they might move. So, you know, a Margaret Beeks could jump first.
So, you know, it seems to me, I've been on the board five years now, go, this is my fifth year or other, that you've used the funds that we have appropriated for you very wisely, capital projects-wise.
We've tried to.
It's, it's been remarkable to me, actually, that you've been able to keep your projects on budget or under budget and on time. It's truly remarkable. That your practices wouldn't change, and you would use the 15 million dollars as quickly and efficiently as you could.
Yes ma'am.
Because we have the projects right in front of us. It's just a matter of doing the engineering and all that kind of stuff.
Correct.
Okay.
Supervisor Demonts.
Thank you. Right now, you've got Harding Avenue is relatively landlocked, so doing an expansion would be a challenge.
Exactly.
Do you have any other schools in the Blacksburg Strand that are similarly landlocked that I'm not aware of? I'm thinking Gilbert Linkest might be?
Yeah, but you could kind of rearrange that front, and rearrange that bus loop because of the way that is situated, and I think you could make that work.
And Harding is the exact same, right?
Harding is, Harding is going to be-
I'm sorry, not Harding, Margaret Beeks.
Margaret Beeks. Margaret Beeks actually has a little bit more land in the back end, so we could rearrange, moving, say, our playgrounds further out toward Kroger's and expanding out that way. There's, there's opportunities there that we could do some things.
And then, Kips and Prices Fork both have some land around them that would allow-
Kips does. Prices Fork's limited. Prices Fork, when that was built, is built kind of in a landlock. If we were to take the land that's free, that's the baseball field and the soccer field. I wouldn't recommend that, because then they really don't have land for, for things during the day, like recess and things like that.
Prices Fork is in the county, correct?
Yes ma'am.
So, you wouldn't have the town of Blacksburg, you would have us to deal with.
And, and y'all are much more, no. I'm going to get in trouble. But, but it's all, no, we have a great working relationship with all three little cows, but apparently, we have a closer relationship, obviously, with the county than we do, just because we work so much with everything. And they do not just-
We're next door neighbors.
Let me just say, the county does not rubber stamp our projects. We have to stay within y'all's rules and regulations.
Well, yeah.
They are, they are very strict about that.
And then, I know you've said it, some of the board members have said it, drawing similarities between managing a household budget versus a locality budget. I'm also not a believer in debt aside from my mortgage. However, I think if we were to squirrel away 100 million dollars, so we didn't have to encumber a big debt like this, that might be frowned on by a lot of people that live in Montgomery County. Am I correct in thinking of a household budget and accounting being very different from how a locality should be budgeting?
No, I think that's very accurate, but you think of the school as your house, as your mortgage, because this is what you're taking care of. The difference being that we do it over 20 instead of 30. And the reason I'd like to go 20 versus 30 is because generally, at 20 years, you're renovating roofs, needing HVAC, there's something needs to be done at the school. I've seen it for years.
Throwing it out 30 years is way more expensive on an interest cost.
So, I know there were times when we pushed the 25 or a 30-year for a school, and I just, I've seen it too many times in places like this where it just doesn't work. But, but I think that's right. You, 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 the whole idea is, it's also generational equity. So, it's a little bit everybody, it's not just the folks here now paying for the school, but it's the folks that are going to be using it, and here enjoying the benefits of having a good school system.
I've never heard the term generational equity before, and I love it. I, I actually really like that, because I think it's a very eloquent way of understanding that. I don't think it surprises anybody that I support issuing the bond at 100 million. One, because I think it gives us some flexibility, should something, hopefully, nothing happens to significantly overrun estimates for Christiansburg High School, but I think it gives us the flexibility if it does, because all of us, I think, are in full agreement that Christiansburg High School well deserves an overhaul. They have waited a very, very long time and operated overcapacity in that school without windows, and in just not great conditions. But I think, not only does it allow us some flexibility with Christiansburg High School, but I think it does allow us to look at some practical, maybe even expansions on schools where we have land to move things around, things that aren't quite as expensive as, and back to talking about a house, it's, it's less expensive to add a garage than it is to build a second floor. So, that's where I will come down on, on this, is supporting us moving forward with 100 million. Thank you.
I was just going to say, first of all, I thank the board, and I didn't mean to insinuate that they didn't support Christiansburg High School. I just got a little excited that we're supposed to be here talking about Christiansburg High School, and we're having, although we needed discussion on Blacksburg High School, so I apologize if I came out a little bit. I know everybody here is in full support of the Christiansburg High School. Obviously, since my kids went to Christiansburg High School, I'm very passionate about those improvements as well. Several things I just wanted to go over again. I, even though the interest rate is low now, I am not a believer on borrowing something when we do not have a plan, and that we don't have a plan, even though we know that there are needs at these high, at these, excuse me, elementary schools, there's not, the board, school board hasn't voted on that, and there's not a plan for us to be agreeing upon. We do, but have the 15 million dollars, and we set it aside for school capital, could it be possibly used for other capital? Means school, but not necessarily the elementary schools?
Yes.
It could be. And would we have a say, or could we tell the school board, no, you can't vote on that? We, we would not have that say.
The school, the school board could ask you, and then it would have to be, you guys would have to appropriate it for the specific project.
Right.
But the 15 million dollars could be used for any school project. That's how the resolution is written.
Okay, so it would not go for a particular planned out, that we have a, a plan to move forward. Okay. And the reason I brought that up is for, is that when we talked about the renovations for Bellevue Elementary and Christiansburg Primary, we just did a resolution for Bellevue that there were 700, over 700,000 dollars from that project that we put towards the operations center that wasn't used for that school, and that was because they had extra. And then, I do believe Mr. Krantz said that for Christiansburg Primary, that there was a million sitting aside that wasn't going to be used, and that was part of the 4 million dollars.
Well, what you got is-
Wait.
I'll wait a second.
Thank you, Tommy.
Yes ma'am, I apologize.
I know better than that.
So, when the capital freed up at the end of the year, the intent of putting it in a CPS or a CES and a, and a BES was to do it as a placeholder. For example, when CES and BES were done, so say, I'm in a room, and this is the wall, and we put in a new casework here. But, the casework only came to this point. No painting was done above it. So now, all of a sudden, I have to go paint the rooms. There's 37 classrooms this summer that I'm painting rooms, I'm putting new floors, so I've got to abate. And those were dollars that we did know at the time, within the contract we had with Branch, that there was enough dollars inside the 35 million. As it turns out, there is. So, we don't intend to use any of the money that we set aside initially, a year ago, in the carryover, and then have since closed out. The projects will come in at 35 million. I wish I could say the same thing about the bus garage, okay? But they'll come in at 35 million and have extras done in it, such as flooring, abatement, paint, that'll be done to, to those particular projects. So, that was just a placeholder, Ms. Bubins. It wasn't intended to say that those projects had increased, have not increased in cost.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, if we do the 100 million, if we do borrow all of the 100 million, that was 3.2 million that the county will need to generate revenue to pay for that?
Offset the debt service in the first couple of years.
Right, we could use fund balance or some, but we would have to come up with that money, yes.
Okay, verse, versus, and, and again, I understand, and then if we'd only did the 85, that would save, or would be less than 1.5 million, or close to somewhere?
It would be one point, the cost would be 1.7.
So, it's one.
So, yeah, one and a half million.
About one and a half. I'm not good at the math as quick as you guys are. That would be the savings for that, and then it wouldn't put us at capacity if we need to borrow once we do have a plan in the next years, and we still are putting 2.5 cents of the real estate tax towards school capital. And the school has currently 4 million dollars right now to use for school capital.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Madam, I was just going to say, the board's welcome to come to consensus. I will tell you, under new business this evening, we do have, as item B, the VPSA general obligation school bond issuance. That resolution is in the packet for your approval. We used 100 million in that resolution, because that was based on the maximum amount. When you get to that resolution under new business, Marty, do they have to vote on the resolution that's in the, that's in the agenda, and then if they can do a substitute, or can they?
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie.
There'd be a motion, and, and the motion might say, I want to amend it to a certain number.
I just, I wanted to make sure we had the protocol right. So, when we get to that item, item B under new business, is when the board can vote on the amount that they want to authorize for that. The other item that we need to discuss is the county's capital improvement plan.
Can we take a break before you do that?
Okay.
Let's go ahead, and we'll take a 10-minute recess, and we'll come back, break, and we'll come back in 10 minutes.
Sounds good.[1362.51] Sounds good. Well, Madam Chair, and board members, you have in front of you some information that Mark has put together. First off, I want to, we teased the nice CIP book a little earlier. You now have that in front of you. I want to make clear that the projects that are listed within this book are the projects, many of which we have talked about with the board previously. These are the projects that we've identified as county staff that over the next five years we should try to include in our, in our work. The cost estimates are, some of them are very different than some of the numbers you've seen in the past. I would ask you tonight to please not get hung up on the cost estimates because they're simply that, they're based on our staff's review and recommendations, our best estimates. The reason, though, that we have to have those cost estimates included is, as we are discussing the schools' needs and funding, we also need to talk about the borrowing for the county's needs. The presentation that you have in front of you indicates that we've identified for the five-year CIP a total of 46.3 million in capital projects that need to be addressed by the county. As staff has discussed potential funding sources for that, as you may recall, we have talked about the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Initially, we were not going to be able to use those for general government projects. However, we did receive clarification late last year that those funds up to $10 million can be used for general government projects. So it's the staff's feeling on that, that we should include 10 million of those ARPA funds to help offset some of these capital projects. We've also taken a look at the county's fund balance and where our revenues have been for the last several years, and we feel that going forward in a five-year plan that we can fund a number of these projects using the cash to capital dollars that we've saved in the budget, and also some additional funds from the general fund that, as you see on that slide, is right at $16 million, leaving a balance of $10 million in the estimated additional funding that we think would make sense to be used from a borrowing. So what I'm suggesting to you tonight is while we've been talking about a $20 million borrowing for the county, we feel that we can achieve these projects with borrowing of not more than $10 million. Angie, Mark, what am I leaving out?
That is, that's a good summary. The prior funding, which is the very first column, those are projects that we've started, but then could add on to in the estimated additional columns. So the total that we need to fund right now, as Craig said, is 36 million. And again, we talked about borrowing 20 million to begin with because it has been very recent that we learned that we could have the standard allowance of $10 million for the, for the revenue loss, that we didn't actually have to have the loss to be able to spend that. So that's why we changed that. And as Craig said, again, we can move this around different ways that you, that you see fit, and we will be prepared to answer questions as you look through the book in the days ahead, and we'll share more with you about those projects as well.
Yeah, thank you, Angie. The intent tonight was not to get into a detailed discussion of each of the projects and those estimated costs because we will move forward with those discussions as we move into the coming weeks to get the board to adopt this proposed capital improvement plan. Tonight, the focus needs to be on the funding, how we fund the capital improvement plan in order to be able to move forward with the borrowing for the county side.
I would like to echo you and thank Mark for all the work that he did. This is a brand-new, the brand-new thing. You have not had a book like this before. It's, and we started this months and months ago, that, when we first met in the fall, and we did have lots of stakeholders have input and talk about things that we really need and come up with cost estimates. And I think it's important that everybody know that we did ask county department heads, people that would have the needs, and included the schools in that process to make sure that we took everything into consideration.
We have, as Courtney mentioned earlier, we have had a CIP in previous years. However, the CIP that was reviewed with the board generally was the first year of that CIP each year, what, what the effect on the operating budget would be. But, you know, one of the, one of the phrases that I've used a number of times over the last couple of years is we need to do a better job of focusing on the future, and in order to focus on the future, you need to see the entire five-year picture, and you need to understand the financial implications of those projects as well. So, board members, with that, staff's thoughts on the county's CIP is that we would be comfortable with recommending $10 million in funding. And then, as Mark has, thank you, Mark, the next steps tonight, of course, or any questions you have in general about where we are with that process, consensus on school and county bond issuances, and for the future, in future meetings, we will be discussing these specific projects in more detail and the, and how we will use those allotments of funds to fund those projects. I'll leave anything out, Mark?
All right, well, we'll go around and see if anyone has any questions or comments. And I think we are with Supervisor Fidzikowski.
I don't have any questions.
Supervisor King.
Sorry about that. So you say if we just borrowed $10 million, we can do all these projects?
We can do all these projects, assuming that we can utilize about $16 million in the next five years from county capital cap, yeah, excuse me, county capital transfer from the operating budget, county general fund dollars, and 10 million of ARPA funds, yes. We, we feel that we have the capacity within the county's budget to do that.
So take some out of operation budget?
Yes, sir. Well, take some, Angie, you want to help explain that a little bit?
It would take some out of that excess revenue that we talked about that we're going to collect this year. We could use part of that and part of the funds that we had at the end of June of '21. Historically, a lot of county projects have been funded with money that we have had in that nature. Earlier Supervisor DeBots was talking about how we would not be good stewards if we squirreled away $100 million, but when we can gather smaller amounts like we have in this case, it does make sense to do cash to capital. While it's important that we maintain strong fund balance, it would not decrease our fund balance to a dangerous level at all. Of course, you could also use those funds for something else if you chose to do that. If you chose to borrow more money, we still would have funds available to use for something else.
Yeah, I just get concerned when you pull money out of operation budget.
No, I understand.
Because it's hard to put it back.
Well, and this, yes, sir. The other point I wanted to make, and Mark may, was going to mention this earlier, the last time the county borrowed funds for county projects was 2008, I believe. That was the courthouse and the...
Public safety building.
Public safety building. So we, the county has not borrowed funds for 14 years.
Yeah, and if you're, with y'all looking in the future down five years, now, you know, we just done reassessment, and I think, just my opinion, I think if reassessment comes up how the way most people figure it is, we're gonna have to look at the rate because, you know, if people's real estate doubles or something, I mean, we're gonna have to look at something to give them a break. I just, I'm, what I'm asking, I guess, are you adding that into it?
No, we're not considering that we would receive a lot of money from that. We are not considering any of that in this.
That's true.
This is, these are funds that we feel comfortable with. If you don't, if you keep a revenue-neutral rate with reassessment, if you roll the rate back, we didn't take that into account at all. We have these funds as we move forward. Now, earlier I said you could use them for something else. They would need to be used for one-time purpose, so if the real estate rate or assessed values doubled, we wouldn't want to say we're gonna roll the rate back a whole, whole lot and use some of this one-time money because we would have to fill that gap. But these funds that we're talking about in this document are available and could be used for one-time expenses.
Okay, all right. And one more question, on the redoing the old sheriff's office, is that redoing it or turn that one down?
And that's subject to future discussion. We've included funding in there to provide a renovation and an addition for a Sallyport. But again, at this point, is that correct? Is that how we stated that in there? I'm trying to remember on that project.
Is it a renovation? Yes.
Yeah, I couldn't remember for sure, but yes.
Because when we, that was our plan in the, in the fall, when we reviewed the projects, that was the plan at that time, to do the renovation and add the Sallyport.
Yes. Thank you all.
Supervisor DeBots.
Mark, I'm sorry to ask you to get up, but can you put the previous slide back up, please? They're not alphabetized.
They're in no, they are in no order whatsoever.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at it going, are these in priority order, or, so they're just...
Random.
Random order, okay.
Random, yes.
I asked that because I see Creed fields at the end, like, what?
No, it's not a priority order. I honestly don't know how you came up with the order mark, but it's, no.
Okay, that's all, that's the only question that I have, was just making sure that those...
It really is an accounting thing that it's kind of embarrassing on my part. It has to do with account numbers in Munis. I'm sorry.
Great answer.
We'll do better next time.
No, no.
It's not totally random. It makes sense to only me.
I appreciate that it's in a random order, not saying this is the list of the projects that we're going to complete because I'm looking at it going Cinnabar, green space and storage ahead of Creed, finishing Creed fields. That doesn't make any sense. So I appreciate that. And I don't have any other questions about this particular portion of the program.
Supervisor Bone.
So if we borrow $10 million, will we use it right away?
We would probably, we would have to evaluate that. You guys could decide which funds you wanted to use on which projects and what order we would go in. We do have a time constraint with the ARPA funding.
And what's that timing?
They have to be, we'll let Mark answer this.
This will be our ARPA funds.
Yeah, I didn't bring the, the note, I think, if I remember correctly, that they have to be obligated by December of '24, and then spent by December of '26.
Twenty-six, that's right.
Yeah, so...
So we would be borrowing money now and not using it necessarily for a couple of years?
I wouldn't say that at all. I think that we, I think it's important that the, the ARPA funds, because of the timing and that we have to, I would think that we would want to move quickly on those to make sure that we obligate the funds and are able to spend them. But at the same time, I think that we can do the other projects, put them in play and, and get them accomplished in the five-year plan, the way we have it structured. We pushed a few projects out, and, you know, when you look at the document, you will see how we've structured them, and we've structured them in such a way that we think that we can complete them in the order and the years that you see in the book.
And that's on page five, I'm assuming.
Yeah, each project has its own timetable that links back to the, the summary sheet.
So since we're use, we would use the ARPA funds first, the $10 million bond funds would be second?
We would probably use them at the same time.
But sometime over the next five years, not, not all in the first year, clearly.
No, we cannot do all of these projects in one year.
And that's...
So is it similar to borrowing an extra $15 million for the schools because they don't have, they're not going to spend it in the next year either? They're gonna spend it in the next seven, though.
The difference, I think, is we have, in this scenario, we've identified the projects. We're determining the funding that it's going to take, the various sources to cover these projects. The challenge for the county is going to be management capacity to manage all these projects. However, it, just looking at the screen that's in front of you now, if we moved forward with the Auburn Park and Falling Branch Phase Two and the sheriff's office renovation in Sallyport, that's $22 million. That would use all the ARPA money, all the bond money, and start digging into the capital within two years.
So you're asking us to approve the bonds without approving the projects first? That is what you're doing right now, right?
We are doing that right now. That is correct.
That's right.
But we do have the list of, of our proposed projects for you.
So the list for the schools is quite short, right? Blacksburg Strand Elementary Schools, not too complicated. Well, you know, it's not simple. That's why Tommy gets paid the huge bucks, right? But same kind of concept, or am I, they don't have a fancy book. They don't have a fancy book with estimates in it, but we sure know what it costs for BEs, CPS and CES. Is that true?
Oh, we know how much they cost, yes.
Yeah. So how can we approve $10 million worth of bonds for projects that we haven't approved yet for the county and not do the same for the schools?
I don't have a vote. We're just proposing this.
Okay. Or am I thinking about this incorrectly?
We, what we're trying to do for the board is identify specific projects which have been vetted out through county staff, and many of these projects have been vetted previously with this board as well in previous discussions. And as part of a five-year capital plan, we've identified the various sources of funds to cover that. If the board approves the funding sources, part of which are the bond funds, then we can then, within the next 30 to 45 days, make sure the board is comfortable with these projects, then begin to discuss some priority and how they'll be funded. Mark has made some assumptions in this book, but we have to start with that. Mark has made some assumptions in this book, but we have to start with that. Once the board confirms that, then we will start moving forward with the projects. So the only way I know to answer that Supervisor Bone is, yes, there are funds that will be spent very quickly if the board agrees with these funding sources and moving forward. You know, I can't speak for the speed at which the schools would turn and, and bring back detailed projects for their 15 million.
But Tommy probably could.
Again, I apologize.
No, thank you, Mr. Krantz.
I mean, I could have something at the joint meeting for you, for you, the two boards to discuss.
Can it be glossy like this with pretty pictures, please?
If that's what you really want, I'll make it glossy and pretty pictures.
Yeah, I really do want glossy bound, pretty pictures, please.
I can have, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We can vote on tonight what we want to do, can't we?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that, under the agenda this evening, item, whoop, there it went. Item B is the resolution for the school bonds. Item C is the, is the resolution for the county capital projects. And again, I, I want to continue to emphasize that as part of the five-year capital plan, there will be much more discussion with the board about the priorities of the, in terms of ranking these projects. And also much more discussion as we get into them and as far as refining the costs as well. But the county staff felt when we're talking about 46.3 million of potential projects over the next five years, that 10 million of bond funding would be sufficient.
Supervisor Shepherd.
It is true. We've already broke ground on several of these projects, is that right?
The Auburn Park project's already underway. We are working in part of Falling Branch Phase Two already, the biggest projects. The one that really surfaced that we've talked about but had not really surfaced until we went through this process was the Christiansburg Library renovation. You know, the library board had a study done several, several years ago that called for new libraries in Christiansburg and Blacksburg. And we just have never had the funding to be able to address that. But this is an opportunity to at least get started on that project. Government center improvements, we've talked somewhat about, but there's a lot of other, there's a, you know, as, as Mr. Krantz has mentioned with school buildings and aging, you know, where, there's a lot of work to be done around here in the next five years, too. So that was a long answer to your question Supervisor Shepherd. But yes, a lot of these are already moving forward in some form or fashion.
That's, that's all I have.
Supervisor Fitchikowski.
I think you already hit me up, but I wouldn't mind voting on some of these projects tonight.
All we need tonight is agreement on the funding sources. We'll be back at a future meeting to start getting these set up and moving forward.
Okay.
Supervisor, we already got-
You can vote on anything you want to.
Anything else to add Supervisor King?
No, I'm, I'm like Steve, I'm ready to vote on tonight.
Vice Chair Biggs.
The part that would come out of the operating budget, tell me about that again.
There are no funds that are going to come out of the operating budget. Those are funds. Basically, it's fund balance. So in the current year, we know that our revenues are strong. They were, we're going to come in above the estimated revenue amounts. And so that's going to result in one-time funding that we can use for some of these projects. But it's not going to come out of the operating, but expenditure budget.
In the county cap, in the county capital transfer, it says in operating budget. That's the pennies that we're setting aside for capital.
That's right.
That's, that's where I-
I'm sorry.
No.
I wasn't even on that line at all.
No, I, I, I picked that up earlier when I heard operating. We're not saying we're going to take operating funds and put it into capital. Those are, that's the penny and a half, how mu, I can't remember. How much are we putting for, numbers just go whoosh at this time of night?
It's one, one penny of the tax rate, 904,000 roughly, that is set aside for future capital. That has accumulated. And as you look through the document, you'll see how we've kind of utilized those monies. There's a few years in the, in the out years in '26 and '27 in which you will see those penny values where they're not assigned to a specific project. But we have assigned dollars to each project through the, the document as a proposal to you guys.
And we also transfer annually, from the operating fund to the capital projects fund for fire and rescue equipment. We set some aside for-
T, IT.
IT and for parks and recs. So the part that Mark's talking about, that penny, is not for a specific purpose. Whereas the other part of the transfer, if you look back in the operating budget, they're designated for specific items.
Okay, yeah, that, that helps with the clarification because I know I've been bringing up before about, you know, with our emergency services, we're really going to have to have a plan about how to pay for that because it's already costing us over $900,000 just in this budget. And, you know, and I still have concerns about, you know, what you guys are working out with the schools. So when you said operating budget, I was like, and Todd, I think Todd was trying to act, and I was like, whoa, you know, I, I need to understand that. So thank you.
Right, so from the fun, from the, the penny that we have set aside, haven't we already designated $100,000 up for the trail? Is that the same?
The penny that is set aside that Mark was speaking of is exclusive of that trail. Those specific things are not included in that.
For additional set-aside.
Those are additional set-aside.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's additional. And then when we talk about additional revenue, are we talking about not the 5.4 growth revenue that's estimated? Because that's going to be in operational, correct?
That's correct.
What about the 2 million that we projected, that he projected in January, 2 million base revenue? Is that included?
No, it's the, go ahead, Mark.
No, it's not either.
So actually, when, when we talked in January, I said that it looked like at the end of this fiscal year, we could be $7.5 million above the estimate. Most of that money being in sales tax, recordation and delinquencies. And only roughly a little over 2 million of that was recurring. So that plus our growth number of 3.2, you know, gets us to roughly that $5.4 million number. That plus the, the cigarette tax revenue gets us to the $5.4 million number that we have as an ongoing revenue source going into fiscal year '23.
Okay. All right. And then the 4.25 that's set aside parks and recs in here, is that for the Auburn or is that separate?
It currently is for Auburn.
Okay.
That's covering the grading costs that we've incurred for-
It was my understanding that that was-
She's talking about the transfer, right?
Right, right.
It was my understanding that that was an annual in the budget transfer. But currently, the Parks and Rec Commission sees that money as going towards the next parking lot, yeah.
Because at that point, we didn't have this fleshed out. And so if this is adopted, then in the out years, you could make a different determination as to what you wanted to do with that portion of the transfer.
If you look at the Auburn Park project, the first year has $425,000. The, this year's transfer is in that project every year beyond the first year. So '24 through '27 is in the parks revitalization project.
Just wanted to make sure they weren't, that it wasn't, it was the same pile of money. That's what I was getting to.
Yes, ma'am.
And a lot of these things you said, we have already discussed many of these things and have done somewhat of a priority checklist that we had in an extended work session of, of priority. And we have already started several of these projects we've already started on and, and started for that funding resource of that. And then, of course, this booklet has broken, broken down how the funding and what actually the plan would be here just looking at the county capital maintenance. So there is a plan here.
Yes, ma'am. What, what this whole purpose of, of this book is, is to formalize a lot of the discussions and plans that this board has done in years past and really give you a, a long-term guide going into the future for your, for your capital programs. Now, that being said, this is a five-year plan, but it would, it will be revised each year as part, as we go through the operating budget. You'll have the operating budget and then you'll have the revised CIP.
And this process also helps us develop and do a better job with our five-year operating plan, which we'll bring to you later as well, because we can build those costs in, like Supervisor Biggs is talking about for the fire and rescue, taking those things into account and determining how we can fund, how these costs will impact the operating budget going forward. Because that is critical. If we don't have funds to operate these facilities and to maintain them, then they're not sustainable. So we have made sure that we can accommodate those as well.
I, I just have to say again, board members, I can't thank the work of, of Mark and his folks and Angie and the guidance. This may be a small book, but it takes a tremendous amount of effort to pull this together and keep it focused. And again, tonight, we just wanted to share with you your first look at this. This will be discussed at a couple of more board meetings before it's formal and final. But because we're talking about debt issues tonight, we had to get it in front of you to be, to include what we think we need as proceeds from a debt issue to be able to fund this first formal CIP.
Any, Supervisor DeBots?
I'm sorry that I keep on saying I've got more. But these should be quick. Page 18, you have Valley to Valley Trail on that page. Is that just because it's something that we were setting aside? It's not?
Yes, that's correct.
And then this is sticking out to me and I just have to ask it. What's the difference between Christiansburg Library improvements and Christiansburg Library renovation?
That's a good question.
And why are there two separate budget items for that?
And Mark has an answer?
Yeah, I have an answer for you.
You got up like you were ready for that one.
Right, well-
Thought somebody would say that.
You were prepared.
Originally, you know, the library director came to us because of issues related to COVID, that there were some outdoor areas at both Blacksburg and Christiansburg that he would like to have us address so that he could have storytimes and things outside for COVID-related things. So those two projects were sort of pulled out aside to say, hey, we want to do these, these sort of things in these two areas. But on top of that, we still have the need to expand the Christiansburg Library in total and also the Blacksburg Library in total. And so when we, we looked at the priorities, the library director said it was his board's opinion that Christiansburg was first. And so based on the funding that we had available to us and what we could do, we put that in there. So the two projects that you see, that are small projects, are roughly $400,000 apiece, are those outdoor improvements to really address COVID-related gatherings and utilize their space in the absence of a full reno, which is also needed as well.
If we did a full reno of the Christiansburg Library, would we still need a $400,000 outdoor improvement?
We would still have to do it. It's just, it's kind of like a subset of, look, we have to do this first. But also during the reno, it would be part of that, so you'd be adding the cost in there together.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yep.
Supervisor Bone.
But we wouldn't have to do it. We would either approve it or not approve it, is that correct?
That's right.
That's correct.
That's right. So I do have a question about like the, the monies over the next three years for the old sheriff's office reno and Sally Port and the new Shawville Rescue Squad facility. So you spend a half million dollars in fiscal year '23 and then another 2.3 in '24 and another almost $2 million in '25. Is that because it takes that long to construct whatever we're, we're doing or?
Yes.
Absolutely. So, so you usually start out with a, a planning phase and they do design, architectural design. So that's usually in your first year, getting all the plans together. Then you would start the actual construction phase. And it generally would take you about two years to complete, depending on the project, to, to, to fully, you know, do those projects and get them complete.
So in some instances, like the library improvements, we haven't really talked about them as a board before. Is that true?
It was included several years ago in the library's long-term capital plan. And it was talked about then, but again, because of lack of funding, we have not brought it back before the board with discussion. So that would be part of the discussion now, not tonight, but as we move into-
And in the future, we would plan to do this in the order that you're talking about and bring the projects to you and then go out for an issue debt? This, a lot of the timing of this is directly related to the interest rate market.
Absolutely. And that's why we want to take advantage of the interest rate now. Is that what you're saying?
If we're getting, yes, it's your choice if we issue 10, 20, nothing. But if we're going to issue debt for the county, we need to do it now.
Because we don't want to wait three years to, if we need the money in three years?
We're ready to do these now. And so if we're going to do them now and we're going to issue the bonds so that we can do the projects now, that's why we don't have like a month to evaluate the projects and then go to the market.
I got you.
Thank you. Any other follow-up?
Yeah, the libraries, I know, that was under Director Austin's time, when, back when I was on the library board. That was discussed ages ago. I am really excited that we have this. I think it's something that has been needed by county our size for a very, very long time. And, you know, it goes with my whole thing about planning for the future. But, but I'm really glad that we do have it and it gives us, I guess, and so what I'm hearing you say, Craig, is we'll go, you know, this is given to us tonight and we can go through it. And then we're going to come back at a later time and actually talk about what projects. But it's sort of like a guide for us to-
Advance that next slide because, exactly. This is, this is, this is your light reading for the next couple of weeks because as it says, you know, future, we will determine the specific CIP projects and funding sources. You know, we hope to do that between now and, and June.
Okay.
You know, we, we, this does not have to be adopted at the same time the county's operating budget is adopted. It can be adopted later. So there'll be time for us to continue to have discussions on the projects and, and making sure everybody's on the same page for that.
And to be clear, to go back looking at these, these projects on the sheriff's office. And I may be mistaken, but I thought we had discussed maybe not renovations, but a total new building.
That can be, that will be discussed when we talk about that particular project. We, we have made some assumptions for the purpose of this book, but that will be certainly one that will be discussed in more detail before we move forward with any project at the, at that site.
And would that cost be, I'm assuming, a lot more than a renovation or?
We don't know yet. The, the, there are, as I'm sure the schools know as well, the costs are all over the place right now, materials and other things. So that's why some of the numbers you see on this sheet, you know, when I first saw it, it was like, oh, my gosh. But until we have a more defined plan for each one of these projects, these are just our best estimates with the information we have right now. But yes, ma'am, that project in particular, I know we'll come back for a final decision before anything moves forward.
When, as before you was on the board and we met over at the Animal Control Center that night, at the majority of the board, and of course, we can change stuff, but we're, they're getting this as the majority of the board said they wanted to renovate that, if I'm not wrong. But I mean, it can, anything can come back.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
But a lot has changed since that meeting for sure. You know, the county's in a different place, you know, so.
Very good. Well, first of all, Mark and Angie and through the whole staff, I mean, all these booklets in great detail that you provided for us so that we can have, you know, time to look through to know, just thoughtful. We know this has been a very busy season in addition to our big budget booklet that we have detailed. So we appreciate, I'm sure the board all appreciates all the hard work. So we appreciate, I, I'm sure the board all appreciates all the hard work that you all have put in these, um, nice brochures that break it all down for us. Um, and especially even this one with all the information as well. So that's great for us to, to see.
And if I, if I can just tag onto that real quick too. Part of the team that doesn't get mentioned very often is Jennifer and Darlie Aguilar and Josh. Uh, they're, they're our creative minds. We're, we're a bunch of number people. We do a lot of crunching and, uh, we can give you a spreadsheet all day long, but if you want it to look pretty, we hand it over to Jennifer and her crew. And, uh, so a lot of this is their effort too. So thank you as well.
Okay. Do I have a, anything, anyone else? Do I have a motion to come out of work session?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Items of consent. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. On to new business. Uh, do I have a motion to consider that we, historically, we, when we have a, a public hearing where we have, um, speakers, we usually don't vote that night. We usually continue it to the next. Do I have a motion for that to continue to the next?
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, a motion at table. That's what you need.
Motion to table.
Yeah, I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just the, be clear, tabling to the next meeting, so.
Correct. All right, Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Is the motion and approved to a table?
And next up, general obligation for school bonds and issuance.
I'd like to make a motion to approve $100 million as a bond issuance for the schools.
And I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call roll.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
No.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
No.
Chair Blevins?
No.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
There we go. I have four noes, three ayes for 100 million.
Okay.
I, I would make, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, go ahead. Are you gonna go 85?
No.
I was gonna do something in between.
I was gonna do something in between first.
What you're, what you're in between?
90.
I was thinking we're 95. Can you go 95?
No.
How about 92 and a half?
No.
91?
No.
How about we have a motion? One of you did? We'll have.
I would make an emotion to amend the, um, resolution to, um, 90 million on the school side.
I have a motion and a second. Any dis?
Madam Chair, just to be clear, it's, we had to add on 500,000 onto that, so it'd be 90. But that, because of the whole premium thing, it's still 90. Does that make sense? Okay, 90. Yeah, but the ordinance, the ordinance will say 90 million, 500,000. That 500,000 is the issuance cost, uh, but it's 90 million revenue. Yeah. Oh man, spit it out? Yes, sir, I'm trying. It's late. 90 million, 500,000.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
No.
Ms. Biggs?
I'm gonna vote aye because I, I, part of the record here, um, because I want the Christiansburg High School project to go forward. But with my vote, I want to state that I think it, it is, um, it would have been better to go for the whole 100 million and, um, but I would like to see the Christiansburg project go forward. And what's gonna happen is we're gonna be back here dealing with the other and it's gonna end up costing us more money, just so that's put in the minutes.
Mr. King?
Aye. I, I just want to say, I do, and I've always said it's Christiansburg's time, but I'm just kinda leery about putting ourselves to the limit if something happens down the road.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye, and I'm glad to move Christiansburg and move on for that project.
Okay, six ayes, one no.
Moving on, issuance of revenue bonds for county capital project.
So moved.
Should we?
Second.
Yes, ma'am. This resolution is, it states right now, Angie Mark, help me, it's 20.
One is what it says.
Says 21. Should be 20 million, 100,000.
But we're, but you're only, 20.5.
But you're only recommending 10 million.
It would be 10.5. I didn't hear the number that you said. I'm sorry.
I didn't make a number, but I assumed we were going for the 10 million.
We need 10.
Five.
Okay.
I take back my second. Can I do that?
Yeah, good.
Does anybody want a second?
I, I don't even, what?
Let's clarify what the resolution is.
What's the motion?
Help with that.
What's before you is not to exceed 21 million, but now, what I'm understanding based on the conversation that I was able to follow, um, that you're saying 10 million and then Angie's saying we need the issuance cost, so it'd be 10.5.
And that's, what I was gonna say is the resolution, the resolution that's in the packet is 21 million.
It didn't need to be 21 million.
I know, but the resolution that's in the packet is 21 million. So Courtney, Courtney's moving forward. Is this your fault? What'd you do?
No, it's VPSA's fault. Um, I'm, so, and just to clarify, VPSA requires us to put proceeds in their resolution, which out of the proceeds has to come the cost of issuance, which is why we were doing the 500,000. We actually don't need it for this one, because we're not gonna borrow more than 20, 10 or 20, whatever number you guys decide, we'll work out the cost of issuance and we'll still be able to, because of the premium, produce the amount of proceeds that you tell us to produce. So this can be an even number.
Okay, so, okay.
Thank you.
So my motion is to approve the 10 million that the county is actually recommending that we approve to support this awesome booklet right here.
Does that need 10.5? Is that?
No, it's just 10.
10.
10 flat.
10.
10-2.
I have a motion.
Oh my god. 10 is good, he says.
I have a motion and a second.
Who's seconded it?
For the, for the 10. Any discussion?
Yes. I, um, I think we ought to go for the whole thing, because as Supervisor Bone has pointed out, hold, hang on a second, that this beautiful booklet has got details of what projects we want to do. So I think we ought to do those projects.
And, uh, the schools have promised to provide these types of details.
How long have they had to do that?
Have we asked them to do it? We haven't even asked the county to do this.
But have they ever done that?
Yeah, the last joint meeting we had.
Have they ever asked for 15 million dollars and not given any details as to what it was gonna be spent on? Have they?
I, I don't know about you, but I heard Mr. Krantz come up here and tell us the obvious needs that we have for our elementary schools in Blacksburg.
And you heard me say that I am quite sure they do have needs, but they didn't, they didn't spell any of them out.
But he is going to spell them out by our joint meeting, he said.
Well, I'm voting tonight, so.
Well, and the Blacksburg schools have been mentioned in previous meetings with the school board.
For years.
Like it's nothing new.
Yes, okay, okay, okay. But how many other schools need work?
Let's get back to the motion point. We've already voted on the, the school bond. Let's go back to the motion.
Let's go.
Okay, so I have a, a motion for the 10 million and a second.
I, I'm confused.
I am too. We're in discussion right now. Is that correct?
I'm confused because the county's asked for 10 million, so I'm not sure what the objection.
That's not, that's not what's in the resolution.
Yeah, but.
But in the book, it asks for us to lower it to 10 million from 20 million.
They said they wanted.
Is that, is that what you had said?
Yeah, they wanted the 10 million.
So you want it to be?
Yeah.
10 million dollars. That's what they've been saying for the last 30 minutes.
We will, we will work with whatever the board approves. In our review and putting this information together, again, as we said earlier on, we used a maximum of 120. We had to talk to the bond rating agencies. We had to talk to the, the bond council. So we had to pick our maximum numbers. So you voted on what you were comfortable with for the schools. For the county side, we feel that now that we know that we can use 10 million of ARPA funding, we don't need to borrow the full 20 million. We can suffice with 10 if that's the will of the board.
Okay, that's not, not the way I understood it, but thank you for clarifying that.
Absolutely.
And that makes you happy, right?
But it's not making me real happy. I, I'm looking at the bottom line, that it's 46 million dollars and we need to use up the ARPA money within a timeline.
It's over five years and so we'll have all the appropriated money throughout those five years in addition to this 10 million and the ARPA money.
I'm good with it.
I might.
I'm down with it.
In addition?
No, whatever you've highlighted in this book, right? You have the, um.
We're gonna use our, our, what's in the book uses ARPA funding, right?
That's right. That's right. But also, the reason why I mentioned the book is because we have the Valley to Valley Trail, 300, you know, the other funds that we keep setting aside for all the projects that we have.
That's right. That's not on the summary sheet at all that we presented to you. That's correct. We.
Those are already funded.
Yep.
Right.
Yep, those are, yep.
Ongoing. So the, the motion is 10 million dollars.
So to clarify, to make sure everybody's on the right page.
No, flat. 10 million dollars.
Okay.
That was what Courtney advised.
Courtney just said.
Yeah, okay. So we're okay, okay.
But if we got 20 million dollars, we'd be further ahead with these projects.
Well, I think that was argument we made before with the other bond issue.
They got, they got five more we have to ask for to start with.
Let's vote on this motion first. Then you can make another one if it fails.
So make sure I'm clear, that we're all on the same page. We have a motion and a second for 10 million dollars, um, for the bond to use towards these projects. And as I'm understanding, these projects were about 46 million dollars and 10 will be used, ARPA would be the funding source, 10 million to borrow. And the other 16 million, we already have funding from Fund Balance and.
General Fund.
General Funds Capital, um, Savings that we already have savings for and to use towards that to reach that 46 million.
Out of the 46 million, 10. almost 3 has almost been done. So really, we're talking about 36 million, the middle column on the presentation. 10 million dollars from ARPA, 10 million dollars from bonds and then about 16 to make the 36.
So everybody clear on that? So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. All right, moving on. I done lost my place here. Oh, yes. Resolution for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April the 10th through the 16th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Reports, county attorney.
Um, not at this late hour, Madam Chair.
County administrator.
Madam Chair and board members, just reminding you of three upcoming meetings. The budget public hearing will be 6:00 PM Thursday, April 7th. Uh, the budget work session, uh, we will include as part of our regular board meeting on Monday, April 11th. And hopefully, we will have everything answered to your satisfaction by the end of that meeting. And then we will have a special meeting on Monday, April 18th at 6:00 to hopefully adopt the budget and the tax rates. And so a couple more meetings and, uh, we will be moving ahead with, with the budget. That's all I have.
Thank you. Start over here with Supervisor Fidzikowski.
No report.
Supervisor King?
I have no report, but I would like to thank, uh, Sherry and her husband for coming out supporting around our fire department, uh, oyster dinner, and Craig and his wife for coming out. Appreciate almost 900 people. We served almost 900 dinners Saturday and it was cold. Thank you, that's all.
Supervisor Demont?
Craig, I don't want to, this is not a criticism of your dates. You didn't mention the joint meeting with the school board on April the 12th.
I was, I was budget focused. I'm sorry. We do have a budget, a joint meeting with the schools, um, on Tuesday, April 12th.
Do we have a time and a location for that? I just have like joint meeting with school board in my calendar. I don't know where to go.
I don't think we finalized that.
Okay.
We'll have our, we'll have our people call your people or your people call our people. We'll, we'll figure that out. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Probably 6:30 or 7. I know we've tried to.
Okay.
We'll nail that down.
That's it. I have no additional report.
Supervisor Bone?
I want to make a shout out to the people who run Dialogue on Race. They had an incredible meeting, um, on Saturday at Christiansburg Middle School. And, um, hundreds of people showed up and, uh, it was great to understand from Dr. Warren Reed, the, um, evolution of racism, whether it's institutional or, and so on, and how it all ties to the truth about critical race theory and the falsehoods about critical race theory. And, uh, it was really helpful to just kinda get a whole picture as well as ta. Do you want to make a shout out to Dr., um, Annie Whitaker? One, because she did just finish her doctorate and that's very impressive. Thank you for doing that. And two, she made a great presentation about where our school division is as it relates to hiring, um, any kind of discrimination, that kind of stuff, as well as what the new, uh, governor's doing, uh, in support or lack thereof, uh, different, uh, different way of directing the school divisions for the state. It was a, it was a really wonderful Saturday morning.
Supervisor Shepard?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate all the work that Mr. Meadows and Ms. Hill and Ms. Jennifer over there and all the other working parts put into all this fine work.
Thank you. I did leave out, when I named off Jennifer's department, I left out Becky Hurtlin and I realized that when I looked up and saw her husband sitting in the back of the room. Becky's our newest addition, uh, and she's done a lot of work for us too. So Ed, thank you for allowing Becky to work up here with us. We've enjoyed having her.
All right, Vice Chair, Biggs?
Okay, I want to thank staff and Courtney again for, you know, all the information and answering all the questions tonight. I want to thank, uh, Tommy for being here and answering all those questions. And I want to thank Chair Cass for coming. I know she's left and she may have to go to work tomorrow. I know she's left and she may have to go to work tomorrow, but for coming and addressing us. And I want to thank Supervisor Vaughn for going to the Dialogue on Race. I was unable to attend this year and I have heard really, really good things about it and I think it was a much, much needed thing to happen at this time. My only report is that last Tuesday night, I participated in a Legal Women Voters Forum along with VT Engage and it was really interesting. It was mostly virtual and I was on a panel with two other women. One of them, a young lady that graduated from Tech just recently. And the whole idea was to talk about how women, the three of us, got involved in politics and to encourage young women that were attending Tech if they wanted to think about getting involved in politics.